Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this duly regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Board of Adjustment has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Excellent, so we need a roll call, please.
Mr. Book is absent. Ms. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Hurley?
Here.
Ms. Camello?
Here.
Ms. Russell?
Here.
Ms. Bradley?
Here.
Mr. Splatoff?
Here.
Ms. Costanzo?
Here.
Mr. Najarian?
Here. Okay, we got not as a discussion at this juncture.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Slight change to the agenda because there are a number of changes to the agenda and matters for discussion that affect the balance of them. Quite frankly, I think the first matter for discussion should be the request for consideration for county line holdings. The reason I articulate that is that there's a resolution that was pending. I can tell you that the board has generally granted the opportunity, the applicants the opportunity to address requests to reconsider its determination prior to the memorialization of the resolutions. Two general reasons for that have been, one, that as a quasi judicial body, although there's nothing specific in the statute, there's a process for reconsiderating, for courts to reconsider their determinations, and we've sort of extended, the board has traditionally extended that opportunity pursuant to the court rules to determinations. And secondly, it has the potential to avoid litigation. And thirdly, it allows for a complete record ultimately to the court. But it is the board's determination. If the board does not want to consider the applicant's request, then the board should vote on, when it comes up, on the resolution.
Through Chair, Council, is the applicant obligated to provide testimony or information as to why they desire this path?
Yes, new, they have to provide new evidence, basically, evidence that was not, that was newly discovered and not presented. So the board ultimately, even after hearing this, could determine that they didn't meet the criteria. Well, well, let's, I will, but let's first make it this, respectfully with the chairman, I think, if I threw the chair, I mean, there's a consensus, you generally permitted that, they would have to notice to do that, it creates a record, but it's not, it's not my unilateral decision, it's the board's collective determination.
Of the trial itself. But there is also case law that talks about the difference between judicial matters and administrative matters. We are an administrative agency. We act quasi judicially, but we don't follow the court, the court rules on evidences of that nature. But we are an administrative agency. This is, you know, this is something that in my mind should not be granted except for very unusual special circumstances. And he doesn't mention any of that. So my position is, I would, I would deny the request.
Through the chair, Jim, can you just elaborate a little bit, not fully following you, understanding? So in your closing statement, you mentioned that there wasn't sufficient, well, I think I need you to rephrase what you just said, but normal cases, we would grant an extension or grant this under certain criteria? Is that a proper word? And what, what's your understanding? What is that criteria?
Very special circumstances. It has to be, it would go to issues of fraud, it would go to issues of conflict among board members. If there was a conflict and that person participated and participated in the judgment that's being made or decision being made and determined that there was a conflict, that would be a basis for it, for example. That's not mentioned here. The only thing that's mentioned here is that he wants to put in more facts, and the record is closed.
Oh, so clarifications, he wants to put in more facts, he wants to discuss the facts?
We don't, so, so I'm gonna take it different. No, this, so, you could read, I believe you could read this letter, and the board has generally taken these requests as requests to present the, for the opportunity to present such information that could be cognizable, that could be considered by the board to reconsider. But so I would not read, so I, me, my recommendation would be not to, would not to be, not to read the letter as broadly as, these are the issues we want to raise. Because if he tries to raise those, the board can forestall that and determine that we're not, the board's not going to hear that, because you're offering new facts. You're not offering, you're not offering newly discovered information. But again, it's the board's, it's the, ultimately the board's determination.
Essentially, his argument is one that he would make to the court, that the facts don't support the decision. That's what he says. And that's where the judge did decide. We start, I, I know that we don't want to get involved in litigation. I don't even think he can litigate this because he's beyond his 45 day time to appeal anyway.
No, no, he's not here, because there's been no resolution.
On this one?
It's on for tonight.
I thought he says that this was done in October.
That, no, the hearing was October, there was an error, it was on for the board's passage, but there wasn't a quorum to pass the resolution. So he's within his timeframe.
So we did not adopt the resolution?
Correct, did not.
Then I don't have a problem.
You're reversing yourself now, James?
No, I, if, yeah, I don't think, if there, if a decision has been made, but the resolution has not yet been adopted, then you can reopen it. I don't have any problem with that. I'm under the understanding, reading this, that this was decided back in October, and he's far beyond his 45 days to appeal.
No.
But Sean tells me that's not the case. If that's not the case, then I change my, I revert myself, so.
Simply for the fact that it hasn't been memorialized.
Correct.
And that has standing.
I don't understand.
Well, it has merit, the fact that.
What, what the, let me, let me.
I'm just trying to understand this appeal. I'm trying to understand this appeal in depth, or am I going too deep?
My only, my point, my point that I was trying to make, maybe not well, but relative to the resolution being adopted, was you have 45 days to file an appeal. If his 45 days to file appeal has passed, which is 45 days after the publication of the decision, right, if that has passed, and someone comes in and asks for reconsideration and reopening it, it just gives him a basis to file the appeal to the court, when he has no right to appeal to the court. So that would be a problem. When you have a situation asking for reconsideration, there has to be an actual basis for it, and it has to be significant, not just, I think I missed some facts.
So if I may.
The resolution has not yet been adopted, then we can reopen it.
So, so maybe I wasn't clear. The resident, so just, I'm gonna just A, B, and C it. There's, the resolution has not yet been adopted, the board has, has generally accepted requests for reconsiderate, the request to attempt to have the board reconsider its, its determination prior to memorialization. This fits into that general mode, so that's why my recommendation is to permit them to ask for the reconsideration.
Any other board members have comments? Go ahead. What part of the letter are you referring to? I'm sorry. Oh, the first part. That's what I was, that's what, that's what I was relying.
That's right. Correct. But there's been no memorialization, so the time period for appeal hasn't started yet. And what Mr. Hurley was talking about was, he perceived that that October 20th date was the date of memorialization already. It wasn't memorialized yet. This was one of the resolutions that was pulled, because there wasn't a quorum to vote on yet. So the, so in my further opinion, the request for reconsideration is timely, given the process the board has normally acted upon with these requests.
Anybody else like to get a comment?
I have one, actually.
Oh, good.
My concern is, even though it hasn't been memorialized, are we giving applicants too many bites of the apple? How many times has that happened?
Once. All right. So is there a general, you don't have to vote, but is general consensus to, we'll set up a date, they have to renotice. And again, the board reserves the right to determine that the evidence, that their attempted evidence presented does not meet the criterion for reconsideration.
Let's look at that. I'm in agreement, the board members, everybody in agreement? Just one, one condition, that if he's going to introduce new evidence, he has to show to us that it's new, and it's not reasonably available.
Correct, pursuant to the court rule, absolutely. Okay, that's, that's the first issue for discussion. Now, Mr., so, so that resolution, which was on for memorialization, based on that, can be held. Next, a number of, gosh, I apologize, agenda items. Application number one, Keebler Family Trust was on for interpretation, received an indication from the applicant that they've withdrawn their request for interpretation. They will be filing a formal request for a full variance, to which they must renotice. We expect that date to be sometime in February or March, but we are not announcing a date, because they must renotice in any event. So the request for interpretation has been withdrawn without prejudice. It's the status quo until they file, until they file a formal request for a variance. So that matter is off. The application number three, yes. All right. The short version of what I said, I guess, is that the matter's not going to be heard, because the, there is no request before the board to ask for interpretation of the ordinance. They have determined, actually based on my review of the ordinance as well, that they need a variance in order to build, that they can't just ask the board to interpret the ordinance any other, any other way. Is there a better way to say it in English? Help me out. I'm sorry.
So there's gonna be a new, if, if you're here for, if you're here for application number one, there's going to be a new application filed at a later date, and you will, they will be required to notify you as per certified mailing or through the newspaper.
So if you're here for number one?
So the Keebler Family Trust interpretation, V 3395, that matter's withdrawn without prejudice. We expect the applicant, the applicant to refile an application for a full, a full variance. Yes, all right. If, through the chair, do you want to recognize one person?
Go ahead.
You have to come up, though, please.
We're trying to make it clear, sir, everybody understands.
So, sir, can you give us your name and your address? I don't.
Joe DeProssimo, I'm over at 68 East Pleasant Grove Road. I'm two lots away from the lot in question. So I guess my question is, we were alerted to this meeting, so a bunch of the neighbors, we were at the last meeting, now we're at this meeting, will we be able to be notified to come to the variance meeting as well?
Absolutely.
Because we have some concerns.
Correct.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
So next amendment that's going to be carried.
Is applicant, number, application number three on the agenda, Edward and Janine Mitt, Mitt Ror. That matter is to be carried to the February 16, 2022 meeting without the requirement of further, of further notice. This is, the record should indicate this is the, it appears to be the third adjournment, so if they ask for another adjournment, they would have to renotice. So members of the public, we're here for that application number three, a variance 3390, that matter is being carried to the February 16, 2022 meeting. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, is what I'm aware of for, excuse me, matters for.
Bennett Mills, number four.
Number four. No, two is still on, isn't it? Yeah, two more things. Application, yeah, thanks. Application, application number four, Bennett Mills Realty, use variance 3378, that matter also is being withdrawn without prejudice. Withdrawn, right? Correct? Yeah. That's what the email said. So members of the public who are here for that matter, application number four, variance 3378, that is, would be withdrawn without prejudice. There'll be a resolution memorializing that withdrawal at the next meeting.
So when you say.
All right, sir, same, same deal. Come on up at least. Can you give us your name and address?
Anthony Santa Maria, 355 Bennett Mills Road. When you say being, it's withdrawn, what do you mean specifically? Okay. Anthony Santa Maria, 355 Bennett Mills Road, Jackson. Okay. When, when you say it's being withdrawn, what do you mean?
That means that there's no case.
So it's not gonna happen?
It's not gonna, well, what they asked for is not gonna happen, because, unless they refile and ask for something different.
Okay, well, I'm very much in favor of that decision, thank you.
But now number six.
Application number six, Burke, 508 Burke LLC, subdivision number 652. That matter is being carried to the March 2nd, 2022 meeting without, without the requirement of further notice as well. Applicant, so anyone here for subdivision number 652, 508 Burke LLC, you're welcome to stay, but that matter's being carried to the March 2nd, 2022 meeting.
Beautiful. I just wanted to clarify that for the public, so they wouldn't be sitting here all night. So thank you, and we're gonna move on.
To approval of resolution?
Yeah. Approval for the resolution.
Versus Resolution 2022-01, Resolution of Appointments to the Board of Adjustment for the Township of Jackson for the period of January 1st, 2022, to December 31st, 2022. Eligible are Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Camello, Ms. Russell, Ms. Bradley, Mr. Costanzo, Mr. Najarian.
And a second on that resolution. Motion approved.
Second.
And a motion and a second roll call, please.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yeah.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-02, Heisen Estates LLC, Block 4801, Lots 5, 6, 8, 9, and 10, Harmony Road, granting preliminary and final site plan approval with lot consolidation to construct 25 townhouse buildings and a clubhouse. Eligible are Mr. Hurley, Ms. Camello, Ms. Russell, Ms. Bradley, Mr. Costanzo.
I need a motion and a second. Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yeah.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-04, Epperali, Lot 6, Lock 6011, Lot 11, 43 Pennsylvania Drive, granting a variance to construct a fence. Eligible are Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Camello, Ms. Russell, Mr. Costanzo, Mr. Najarian.
Need a motion and a second. Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yeah.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
That concludes the resolutions for this evening.
All right, let's jump into minutes. What do we have?
There is approval of the regular meeting minutes from December 15th, 2021. Eligible are Ms. Russell, Ms. Bradley, Ms. Costanzo, Mr. Najarian.
I need a motion and a second on the minutes. Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Russell?
Yeah.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
That concludes the minutes for approval.
All right, I got two vouchers that we're gonna be voting on here tonight, one for Danielle for 150, and one from team reporting for 250. Motion and a second on the bills.
I'll make a motion and a second.
Second.
A motion and a second roll call, please.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yeah.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Tonight's the last night Danielle will be here as our secretary. And you did an excellent job. No, really, it's a boom. You have no other announcements, no objection, decision, nothing else. So let's get the professionals sworn in.
Gentlemen, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
May I start with Mr. Hill? You can introduce yourself.
Evan Hill, Board Engineer.
Ernie Peters, Board Planner.
Jeffrey Papporo, Zoning Officer.
Thank you. All right. So the first application for Danielle Pearson, or a, Donald Pearson, for shed. You know the family, so you're gonna be stepping down.
Yeah, and there's been previous testimony? Yeah. Sorry, it's all, so Ms. Fritsch is stepping down, and also, Miss, I just want to make it clear, because there was previous testimony. Mr. Splatoff, did you read, have it, have it too much? You did?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so you are eligible to vote. Okay, fantastic.
Thank you for coming forward. Tell us a little bit about what you wanted to do.
Basically, I just need to.
Well, first thing is.
Yeah, we got to show you.
Okay.
Sir, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the information, questions, comments, or testimony you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you kindly again, give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please?
Donald Pearson, P E A R S O N.
Okay, proceed, sir.
Okay. Basically, I'm looking to get a variance for a shed that I have built in my, in the backyard. It's outside the build zone, so I could, I just gotta, I'm sorry. I just turned in an as-built survey to show the panel where the shed actually is. The houses in this neighborhood tend to be very wide backyards, in shallow backyards, or very wide, so there's not a lot of room to put my shed in certain places. So the place I put it was the best spot I could find at the time. And that's what I'm here for, to get a variance for that.
All right, Mr. Hill, continue.
Yep. So just to refresh, the board's memory, this applicant was here in front of the board on October 20th. Quite a bit of testimony was provided on the record of why the shed was located where it was. However, the board's concerns at the time were that it was not based, the location or the sketch of the shed and the measurement of the shed from the property line was not based on a, a current survey, nor, nor was that dimension possibly accurate. The applicant has submitted a survey of the property dated January 11th depicting the existing conditions and the location of the existing shed. The shed is located, is considered to be located in the front yard. This is a cornered lot, and as such, it requires a variance from a front yard setback. The shed is located 14.6 feet away from the property line along Aristocrat Way, which is greater than, greater, that's 14 feet from the property line, and, and greater than that to the street itself. The applicant does have, and I believe they were granted a prior variance for this property for the fit, for the fence within the corner lot. However, since then, a shed has been placed inside that fence, which is still technically the front yard.
Anything to add? You can't move everything?
I think the applicant, the applicant to date has provided you with an updated survey as you requested, and he's also provided you the prior testimony as why that shed was placed in that area.
It's only .7.
Well, no, 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 there's a different, I apologize, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hill, can you just put on the record, there's also appears on this new survey, there appears to be a shed that on the eastern side of the property that appears to be .7 feet from that property?
No, that 0.7 feet for that other shed is not, is not for the shed. That's how far the existing fence is on the inside of the property. That, that dimension has nothing to do, we're speaking about the, we're actually talking about the shed closest to Aristocrat Way, which is in the front yard.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, any board members have questions? James, you have anything? I have no objection with this application. Clearly, the applicant here has, I think, is a hardship that relates to the property itself. Not only, I wouldn't, I don't know if it even classified as irregular, it is certainly unusual. It has a very large arc relative for a property line. That arc actually runs to the side, side of this property, because it's a cornered lot, it's a front, it becomes a front yard requirement. The placement of the shed is inside a fence, so there's no negative impact on the neighborhood as a result. It's, it's, it's hidden by the fence, by the fence, somewhat hidden by the fence. And it's just an unusual piece of property. And based on that, I think the applicant definitely has established a hardship in this case. I don't see any negative impact on the, on the master plan or ordinances. It's an accessory used to the residential, which is the principal use of the property. So I, I see no, no negative impacts on it, and I think he definitely has the hardships. I would, I would recommend the application be granted. Okay, sir, do you plan on bringing any electricity, any kind of plumbing, anything, lights?
No. No, nope.
Okay. And, and business gonna be running that shed?
No.
Any questions from board members? If not, it's left to us.
No, you have to open to the phone.
Anybody in the public here to speak for or against this, before a closed public session? All right, it's up to us. We have a motion and a second.
I'm gonna agree with everything that Jim said. I don't see, I see the hardship, and I see that, you know, it's behind the fence that already had a variance. I will move to approve this, this variance.
I'm in the second. We have motion and a second roll call, please.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yeah.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Splatoff?
Yes.
Ms. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes, you have your shed, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next up, come on up. Arden Alley Team, Jackson Crossing. Cardinal team, Jackson Crossing.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Salvatore Alfieri on behalf of the applicant. Um, we're here for an amended use variance, bulk variance, preliminary, final site plan approval for phase one of the Adventure Crossing project. Uh, many of you have heard earlier versions of this application. There may be some of you who haven't. This is obviously a very large project. As it's being developed, and it is being developed, phase one is being built as we speak. As tenants come in or as, as tenants are identified or as, um, some of the, some of the details of the site are being developed, it, uh, it's required us to come back on several occasions to amend the plans. Tonight, we're here for, um, several additional changes to phase one only. We have approval for phase two, which is warehouses, which I believe site work has begun. We have approval for phase three, which are apartments, and the, we will file sometime soon, hopefully, a phase four, which will be a large res, uh, recreation use. Um, Mr. Johnson's here tonight. He's the principal of the applicant. Mr. Cardinal, he's in Vegas meeting a persp, a large prospective tenant at, at a convention that's going on out there, so he couldn't be here this evening. We're gonna, we have several witnesses, first of whom would, of which will be Mr. Borden, who, um, is our planner.
Mr. Board, if you kindly raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? You have to use the mic because I have learned that the tape does not work.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, uh, your credentials through the chairman and your affiliation?
Certainly. Ian Borden, the President of Professional Design Services in Lakewood, New Jersey. I am a licensed professional planner of state in New Jersey, graduate of Rutgers University, uh, forty years ago. I've been working in the engineering and planning field since nineteen eighty-three, starting with employment at Tom's River Township as their Conservation Officer, and I've been President of PDS since, uh, for twenty-five years. Thank you. I have the exhibits. I guess we'll hand them out real quick.
Thank you, sir.
And Mr. Borden, you handed out a, a package for the board, uh, which you've also provided to the Board Secretary so that it can be placed on the screen. Is that correct?
I did.
And are we gonna identify each exhibit? Have you premarked each exhibit?
Yes, they are all premarked.
Okay. So as we go through each one, you'll identify it?
I will.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm sure as Mr. Alfieri said, most of the board members have not all, uh, have been present for hearings on this project. We're, we're talking about phase one of Adventure Crossing. On the screen and the first page of the exhibits I handed out is Exhibit A one, which is an overall, uh, aerial exhibit. It's a exhibit that we've commonly used at, at all of our hearings, but we updated, obviously, as the project has grown and and evolved, and, and what we have is the, the entire Adventure Crossing project is in the shaded area. You have north at the top of the page, Mammoth Road runs, um, left and right. And, uh, one ninety-five, uh, just to our east, uh, runs a, across the corner of the property. Uh, tonight, the board, we're asking for an amendment to our phase one, uh, site plan, which is basically the central portion of the project. There'll be a blow up of that next, but then, just to give some background, as Mr. Alfieri started, we have our phase two, which was, uh, warehouse buildings approved by the planning board, uh, which is under construction. We have just, uh, phase three in the western portion of the project adjacent to Hurricane Harbor and Six Flags is a mixed-use project approved by the planning board. And as Mr. Alfieri noted, there's a phase four, uh, that, that we're presently working on completing, submitting to this board, which will be the final site plan of the Adventure Crossing project. Uh, but again, we're here to amend phase one. Uh, if you don't mind going to the next.
Ian, before you move off that, the, the areas that are not colored, are they all wetland and strange?
Yeah, the areas that are, yes, between phase one and three, for example, into the rear of phase four, those are threshold or wetlands uh, and regulated areas that are not being constructed upon.
Thank you.
Uh, if you don't mind, uh, so phase one is located on lots two, three, and four in block, uh, three thousand and, and one. The entire project is two hundred and eighty-three acres, of which a hundred and eighty-seven acres, uh, is developable. Uh, the property, uh, phase one contains ninety acres. Uh, the zoning of the property is, is, uh, is a base zone of highway commercial with an overlay zone of HCMU, which stands for Highway Commercial Mixed Use. And I, I guess I didn't notice, I didn't mention in the aerial, Millstone Township is to our north with, uh, uh, the Wawa across the street at Pine Drive and, uh, Light. You have Six Flags, of course, located, uh, to our, to our west and and Anderson Road again, or is, is on the east side, uh, along with one ninety-five. Phase one has been approved, uh, on a number of different occasions by the zoning board, uh, starting back in two thousand and seventeen, uh, and most recently with an amended resolution, amended approval resolution dated June second of twenty twenty-one. That was resolution twenty twenty-one dash nineteen. If you don't mind, Anthony, go to the next sheet. So Exhibit A two is, uh, the, the site plan, uh, as was approved by the board on, uh, June second, twenty twenty-one by twenty twenty-one dash nineteen. Uh, and, uh, phase one in this configuration as approved contained four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine square feet of mixed commercial use, uh, pad buildings along the Mammoth Road with the large air dome structure, uh, medical research and parking garage behind it. Uh, across our main access drive was a convention center with two hotels and athletic fields in the back with, uh, various amenities such as a, uh, concession building, stage, and maintenance, uh, and storage buildings. Uh, one, one of the items that we had received, a, a major, uh, topic of the amended approval, uh, in May of twenty twenty-one was the, uh, parking garage. That was a, a use that was added. That was a use that is the only use that remains on the project, uh, that is not a permitted use in the HCMU zone. Uh, although parking, uh, it is a structure and the zone didn't contemplate a parking structure. We had testified to that and received that devariance in, uh, the, the twenty twenty-one dash nineteen resolution. So.
While that's up, there's a driveway interconnection to the warehouses, um, to the, I guess, southeast. Uh, that driveway does not allow access to and from Anderson Road other than for emergency, emergency vehicles. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah, maybe just, I should have maybe mentioned that. On an overall site, if you don't, if you don't mind, go back to the first sheet, uh, Anthony? Just, yes, I had mentioned Anderson Road. There is no vehicular access to Anderson Road permitted through phase two or any other portion of the project. None is proposed, certainly as part of this. And, uh, as part of the phase two approval, uh, the traffic, uh, is connected through phase one with trucks sharing the front drive, which is the jug handle, the new jug handle from Mammoth Road, and car traffic being through the main access drive. Uh, but there is no vehicular access to Anderson Road approved, nor is any proposed. Uh, so what we have, uh, if you don't mind, Anthony, go to sheet, the third sheet. Uh, what we are proposing is some amendments, and the amendments are driven, understand, by the market. The, uh, as noted, Mr. Cardinal is, uh, courting a large, uh, tenant right now. We hope successfully. But, uh, as we have developed the project, and certainly the project is under construction, I'm sure the board members are aware of that. We have, uh, the, the three buildings in the front of the site in what we call phase A, and I'll get into more details on that in a few minutes. We have, uh, two fast food restaurants that are both now open. Uh, that's a Taco Bell and a Popeyes. And the seven eleven is under construction. And, uh, the air dome building, uh, is under construction. The foundation is primarily completed, and, uh, I believe it's even gone vertical with, with the walls of the, uh, front base. Just to kind of wrap up what's, what's currently occurring on the site, we have the Pine Drive intersection, wh- where we added the fourth leg with the new jug handle. There was extensive testimony on that at previous hearings. Uh, all of those, uh, I had reported back in the May of, uh, June of twenty twenty-one when we received our last amendment that those improvements were approved. And since then, those improvements have been completed. So, uh, all of those road improvements of the building, a new jug handle, the pine drive extension, the traffic light modifications, including modifications to a reversing jug handle, which is off the map to our west, have all been completed and are currently being used, uh, by the public. So, uh, this is the amended plan that is Exhibit A three.
Uh, and the other thing that, uh, I, I know we're not on the bottom of it, but those fields that are at the bottom of the plan are also built in operation.
I should have mentioned that. Yes, thanks, Al. Uh, the fields, I'm sorry, I was talking about the site. The fields at the rear of the site, uh, the four fields, uh, synthetic turf fields are all completed and in use. The only items that are continuing to be completed are the concession building and the stage. But, uh, otherwise, uh, the fields are, uh, are, are completed and, and, and being utilized. There's a tenant that has, uh, as I understand him, he has private, uh, sports leagues, leagues that use it. Softball primarily, soccer, uh, some baseball. They have training there, they have games there. But there's a tenant that actually is operating those fields. Okay, so what we're proposing to, to change on the, on the site are, uh, first, we have, uh, uh, the, the, what we call Building a Hundred, which is the, uh, the only, the, this area inside the junk handle, again, we call phase A. It's the only building in, in phase A that has not been started yet. Uh, but we are, that building was approved with a jug han, I'm sorry, with a drive-through on the east side. Uh, what we are proposing to do is add a loop and a drive-through on the, uh, west side of that building. So we're not proposing to change the building, we're not proposing to change the uses. We're simply adding a drive-through for the end cap on the, uh, on the west, uh, side. Currently, there's two tenants that are, that are seeking to occupy that building. It is Starbucks and Panda Express.
I asked the, oh, Mr. Chairman, is that replacing the drive-through on the east?
No.
Now, there's gonna, it's gonna be winged, not the one on the east and one on the west.
That's correct. There'll be two drive-throughs on the building. Which is why we have, Starbucks was, was in the queue to occupy this building, and then Panda Express would like a spot, and they apparently have a drive-through, so we're trying to accommodate the market with, with that. Yes, yeah, Mr. Ray is here to give testimony on traffic. He's, yeah, he's back there. Uh, secondly, we, uh, reconfigured the area, uh, what we call phase D, uh, which is the area where the convention center and the two hotels were. The parking garage that was located behind the air dome, we have shifted to the, uh, east side of the main access drive and shifted the convention center up and just kind of shifted the two hotels to create better, better flow here. Uh, please recall in our testimony and in our, and, and in our approval. Right, I was getting there. Uh, because recall that the, the parking for the convention center requires the parking garage. That, that was, that, that, that use is the driver for the parking garage. Uh, and we had had significant testimony in our June of twenty twenty-one approval about the garage being located in this location and getting those pedestrian movements across, uh, the main access, uh, road, uh, to the convention. And, and I'll, I'll address that with an exhibit in a few minutes that we still continue to do that. But it struck, uh, us, uh, the team, that, that, that since the parking is being driven, or the the parking garage is being driven by the convention, it would make it much more convenient, uh, for persons parking in the garage to access the convention if they were located next to each other. I mean, it seems obvious in retrospect, but we didn't think of it last year. Uh, but, but that, that was primarily the driver of, of that movement, uh, to simply shift the parking garages. A parking garage, again, uh, had received, uh, a, a devariance, as I noted in my initial, uh, comments. So, uh, the parking garage has not changed as, as far as its size and height and parking capacity. It just simply moved the, uh, the building, uh, from, or the garage from one side of the access drive to the other. So, uh, just to, we don't believe a new devariance is required, but certainly I would like to place on the record uh, that the, um, uh, building, uh, parking garage will continue to meet the positive criteria under the zoning ordinances I testified to back in May of twenty twenty-one. And there's certainly no substantial detriment to the public good or the zone plan by, by moving the garage, uh, simply because it's, it's simply moving within the interior of a very large site. It's not moving closer to the exterior of the property, not moving it. It's, it's not, uh, affecting any neighbors.
Through the chair, so your testimony is that the parking garage is the same square footage?
Yes.
As is the convention center?
Yes.
So everything's just, again, you said it, but it, it shifted.
It just moved.
Apples to apples on size of structure, capacities of structure, they're just being moved on the site.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
So, so only that building, there are other changes.
I know, but I'm, I'm specific to the garage, and I'm specifically specifying the garage and the convention center.
Yes.
And, and the vice chairman is raising that point because the board is well aware. You should have, i- i- isn't it true that this is in fact the same uh, locus, the same site, correct? Same lots?
Yes, same lot and block.
So that, um, again, you've emphasized it, but I think the record should be clear that you're relying on previous, the, the breadth and depth of previous testimony to support the devariance, not necessarily, uh, yet the traffic flow and other things that are affected by the movement. But the, the basis of the devariance, your reliance on that testimony is based upon the fact that this is in fact the same site. This is the, the same intended use, and in fact, it is also simply shifting the similarly sized buildings to a different location.
That's correct.
So that your site engineer and traffic engineer will testify to the site impact of that change. But, uh, but as to the support of the devariance, its reliance is based on the fact that the site use itself is, is similar.
That's correct.
Yeah, I, I'm glad Mr. Gertner got that question answered by the applicant. Uh, often the, the revisions that you'll see on these types of plans are what the applicant will refer to as market-driven. They got a general development plan which said this is what we're gonna try to do. They went and tried to lease it or sell it or whatever they're doing with it, and a potential tenant or client came back and said, well, you know, we're not gonna build a box, we're gonna build a square. And the only, the only site I can think of that board members may be familiar with, uh, would be the Freo Raceway Mall. If anyone's ever entered the Freo Raceway Mall from the Route Nine entrance, where the Toys R Us used to be twenty-odd years ago, up on the right-hand side of that entrance, as you go up the hill, there's still an approval there for a hotel. From nineteen ninety-two, I think. It's thirty years old. And as you get up to the top of the hill, there's a parking lot over there, but there's nothing there. Well, at some point, the site needed parking, so they built the parking. The hotel never came in. As you get up to the traffic light over on the left where they have the Dick's Sporting Goods, that original plan looked nothing like that. Everything on the, if you remember, the mall was everything on the inside of the mall, the structure with the four anchor tenants. Everything on the outside. Everything on the outside got built later, and they had to keep coming back for amended site plan approvals before the Freo Township Planning Board. So not necessarily testifying for the applicant, but so the board has an open mind as to how revisions get done for a project of this size and scope. They don't come here with a plan to build a Taco Bell or a 7-Eleven gas station. They put pad sites in, they go out and get tenants, and the site gets occupied. When they start doing what sometimes is referred to as a more efficient plan, they come back in and say, well, this would be better if we put it here. This client wants to be there. So quite frankly, I'm sure the applicant hopes this is the last time they have to come back here. But I suspect, given the marketplace, if someone else comes in and says, well, we'd like this, but we want it here, and maybe back here again at some point in time, to ask for another revision because someone's going to build a square building instead of a rectangular building. I just want you to sort of keep in mind the idea that this is not strange or uncommon in this type of project, given the size and scope of it, for them to come back and amend the plan based upon who they end up with as tenants. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Obviously, as I mentioned with the convention center, we did shift, the two hotels remain the same. The one is Hilton, the other Marriott, that has not changed at all. But their location shifted, if you refer back to A2 and looking at A3. They just simply, within the same block, they just simply shifted location. In the Air Dome building itself, we have the Air Dome, which is the rear portion, the largest portion of the building, that remains unchanged. The front portion of that building is a brick and mortar that's approved for various uses, a sports bar and recreational uses. But what's been added there is we've added a second floor above the brick and mortar portion of the store. That brick and, that second floor is for basketball, for six basketball courts. Basically, it's a training academy for basketball. And I should say that all of these things are explained in the statement of operations that we had submitted as well. So that's Building 200, it's called, and we had added a second floor to, and we'll have some architecture elevations. We have the boards out here, but they're actually marked as exhibits. Actually, we should do that now, maybe, Anthony, if you don't mind going forward to.
Mr. Chairman, have a question?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity.
Sixth page.
Apparently, this application is going back and forth with the planning board and zoning board, right? How do we, I know we may have common professionals with the planning board and zoning board. Is the plan, and if we make any decision here, don't you have to go back to the planning board anyway with your site plan?
No, because.
Why, just out of curiosity, why did the applicant even consent to stay, to go to the planning board?
Well, when we went in initially for Phase 1, there were no devariances. What brought us here was the parking garage that triggered D.
If I may, you should probably start all the way back, because the first application was before
This board.
the zoning board. And thereafter, there was a zone, there was a zone change.
That's my point. There's a zone change, which allows the applicant to stay with the zoning board. It's in the municipal land use law.
Well, so I had to go.
They didn't have to go back to the.
We did start with the zoning board because the uses and the heights that we had originally proposed were not permitted.
I understand that, and the zoning changed.
Yes.
Right? Which made the uses permitted, so you went to the planning board.
Right, but never for Phase 1.
My only, my only, my only point here, my question is, when municipal land use law got adopted in 1975, the whole idea was the one-stop shopping, right? So you go to the planning board, you go to the zoning board. If it's a planning board issue and certain things, the zoning board would have the right to approve it so long as there was a devariance, we can give site plan just like planning board. GDPs generally get approval before an application is even made and statutorily goes to the planning board. Now, I understand that there have been points here that the uses changed, and that's why it came to the zoning board. But then the ordinance changed, which made uses permitted, except maybe for the garage. But the statute clearly says, you could have stayed at the planning board. So now we're confronted with a situation now where, how do I know, as a member, how do I know what the planning board is doing when we make this change and they get the site plan and they want to change something? Are we going back and forth each time?
No, we're not going back to the planning board.
Why don't you, Mr. Hill, why don't you elaborate?
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that this application before the zoning board tonight is for amended preliminary and final site plan approval, along with what I believe is going to be called an amended use variance for Phase 1. So there is no subsequent site plan approval for Phase 1 that would go to the planning board. I believe the zoning board is being asked tonight to hear the amended application for use variance and preliminary and final site plan approval for Phases A through E of Section 1.
That's correct. And we will not go back to the planning board ever because we now have a non-conform, unless the town changes the ordinance and allows the parking garage to be a permitted use, I guess.
Let me, let me ask a question differently. Because, and the record should be clear, and I think it is clear if we go all the way back, that we had this debate. But is the question that the applicant, that the member is raising, that should you make subsequent changes to Phase, what's happened already is, right? So we can't turn back the clock. But is the question, should you make changes to Phases 2 and 3 that were before the planning board? Would you then, based on the member's question, would you then consent to bringing all future applications or amendments to approvals to the zoning board? So that there's a unified board hearing the totality of the application? Does that kind of get into the point?
Right, and we, we understand that going forward, there's going to be an interconnection between Phase 3, which is the mixed use, and Phase 4, which is the proposed recreation use to this site, which means we're going to be sharing driveways. And because we're sharing driveways to a devariance use before, we're going to have to be for the zoning board anyway. If we're crossing a devariance to get access to a permitted use, we're going to have to come to this board. So yes, we would stipulate that all future applications will come here.
My question is, has the planning board granted anything that the action we're taking changes their approval?
No, no, not at all.
But I'm going to repeat the affirmation because I want it crystal clear this time, so there's no longer a debate that the applicant today, this is the same applicant, consents to the zoning board's jurisdiction over all future.
Except for Phase 3.
Yeah, the only issue is Phase 3 operates by itself right now. If we interconnected to this site, then we would be here. I, I mean, the problem is Phase 3 was approved by the planning board, right? And it's independent currently of the balance of the site. So if we were to tweak that plan, I don't know why we'd come back here and start over with you unless there was a devariance that triggers that.
My concern is, if we, if we are asked now or in the future to make an amendment to a plan, as the planning board approves something, that we would be changing. Now, I, you know, I have always had a disagreement that it should have been to the zoning board to start with. It's a GDP, okay? Once it's a GDP, it's a GDP, and it continues. We have certain protections for a certain period of time for that, right? Different than a regular site plan, different than a regular subsidy. Statutorily, that's the way it is. But I'm just concerned that, you know, going back and forth to the planning board, you know, we can do something, maybe the planning board would change it, or the planning board has adopted something and we're look, we are to look at, and we're amending their approval. We don't even know, as a board member, I don't even know what the planning board is doing.
Understood. And this plan is substantially similar to all the plans that both boards have looked at. The only application that's different, I mean, the only portion that's kind of isolated is the mixed use Phase 3. I don't think we're coming back for any, hopefully, we're not coming back to change that, but.
Regardless of the phase, it's all part of the GDP.
Understood.
So, you know, it's not like a part of it is under the jurisdiction of the planning board, and another part is under the jurisdiction of the zoning. It's not the way it works.
Right, understood.
From now on, we're always going to be for the zoning board, no matter what.
We could stipulate to that. Go ahead, Ian.
So what we have, this is Exhibit A6, just while we were talking about the Air Dome and the second floor. This is a front and side elevation of the Air Dome building. The main access drive runs along the right side here. You see the Air Dome in the back, and the second floor basketball courts is up behind the facade here. You see on the left here, the medical research building, which remains unchanged from the, from the original approval of that in June of 2021. So if you don't mind, Anthony, go back to A3, the third page. Next, on our proposed modifications, we have building what we call 150, which is in Phase D. It's these three standalone pads or two fast food restaurants in a larger restaurant building. The leftmost one is Pad 150. That is currently approved as a 4,000-square-foot pad. We are seeking to increase that size minimally to 5,000 square feet. That's being done because there is a potential tenant there of IHOP, and IHOP would like 5,000. So we're just simply hedging our bet. Should they become a tenant, this would accommodate their size. Next, we have.
Again, it's the building to the left or the larger?
It's the smaller one on the left.
Okay.
This one here.
Okay, okay.
We're not proposing to change 160 or 170, which are the fast food in the larger restaurant building. And again, that footprint, that increase of 1,000 square feet is accommodated within the building envelope, the curb envelope. So to accommodate that extra 1,000 feet, doesn't change any of the parking, doesn't change any of the drive-through, it changes nothing. In other words. No. Oh, it changes the parking requirement. But physically, it does not change the parking around the building and stuff. And certainly, that extra 1,000 feet is built into the parking calculation that I will testify to, and that John Ray will provide more testimony. But as far as the site modifications, there's no site modification to accommodate that extra 1,000 square feet.
I'm sorry, for clarification, that originally, that wasn't proposed to have a drive-through, did it?
It does, yes.
Will it continue to have that?
If it were an IHOP, it would not.
Okay.
Again, we're hedging our bet. It would be a fast food or a high, if it's an IHOP, we would simply eliminate the fast, the, I'm sorry, the drive-through.
Through the chairman, the testimony is that should it become a 5, if you get approval for 5,000, you know we shrink it, right? We agree with that, speaking directly. But your testimony is that should it, should the board approve a 5,000-square-foot building, that 5,000-square-foot building will not have a drive-through?
That was not what we asked, but that would be fine, yes.
So we would want the option to do the 4,000 with the drive-through, 5,000 without?
Yes, that's fine.
And that's because that's been previously.
The 4,000 has been pre-approved.
That's correct. 4,000 is already approved with a drive-through.
Okay, there were a few other changes that are being proposed.
I'm sorry, I just need clarification on this myself. The plan currently shows a five, the revised plan shows a 5,000-square-foot building with a drive-through.
That's correct.
But you're not going to, you're not proposing a drive-through now at that building?
We've agreed that if it's 5,000, the drive-through would be eliminated.
Got it.
We proposed parking would cover everything. There's no additional parking.
That's correct, that's correct. The last change to buildings that we have is where the parking garage was located in the 2021 approval behind the Air Dome. Since it's moved, we have added another use there, which is a complementary use to the medical research building, which is the front building here, which remains unchanged. And that complementary use is a medical campus. So that would be a mirror image of that medical research building that would serve as a medical campus. The concept is, as we have consulted with clinics, et cetera, that would operate the medical research, would be, would be an opportunity to have some education opportunities for the students or the transition then into research.
Through the chair, so you're proposing the same square footage as the medical center and the front? And. I'll get back to you, thank you.
So as a result, and we have increased the square footage of Phase 1 as a result primarily of the second floor of the Air Dome building, Building 200, as well as the new medical campus. So the total square footage now becomes 596,411 square feet.
And that's a building that does not include the fields, correct?
That does not include the fields. That building area does not also include the hotels because hotels are counted by rooms, not square footage.
On that medical campus, is there any residential aspect to that?
There is no residential aspect to the campus, no. Otherwise, the outdoor fields with the concession building, ticket building, storage and maintenance buildings and stage remains unchanged. Recall that in the June 2021 approval, there were C variances granted for, like, I believe that the rear maintenance building for a side yard setback. Those remain unchanged. One of the items that is changed, that we do require additional, and I should state that all of the buildings in their new locations as they were, continue to comply with the building height requirements. So that's obviously important, but they all continue to comply with the building height requirements in the zone. By relocating the convention parking garage and the Hilton Hotel in this Phase D area, the, has placed these buildings closer to the side lot line. Again, this is lots 2, 3, and 4. Phase 2 is a separate property. It's lots 5, 6, 19, and 20. And there, as the planner's report noted, the side yard, even though it's an internal lot line within the project, it's still a property line. Thereby, the side yard setback does apply. The required side yard setback is 25 feet. The setback that is proposed is minimum of 5 feet. So as noted by the planner review, there is required to have C variances for those three structures. So we request C2 variances for those three structures. Again, this is an internal lot line that doesn't relate to a perimeter of the property or any adjoining property owner. In my opinion, the master plan and the zoning plans would be advanced by the cohesiveness of this design and the placing the parking garage in proximity to the convention. Again, the major use is for the convention use. And that, again, because there's no outside property affected, there would be no substantial detriment nor impairment created to the public good or zone plan.
And just in terms of lots, just to give the board and the professionals a little update, we met with the, Ian and I met with the tax assessor and with the township's consultants as they were getting the 2022 tax maps together. And they've requested that we consolidate lots 2, 3, and 4 into one lot. The assessor has already done that. And we've agreed, obviously, to prepare the deed to consolidate them. They also requested that the warehouse site, which was 5, 6, 19, and 20, be consolidated separately, which we've agreed to do as well. So there'll be deeds of consolidation, so there'll be essentially three separate lots. The warehouse lot, this lot, and then the balance of it, which is everything west between this and Bay of Adventure. I mean, that's all being done through, by 4. Oh, and I'm sorry, you're right. And the property that's outside, inside the jug handle would be a fourth lot because that jug handle is a public street. There was a small jug handle there that was owned by the state. It took us several years to get the state to agree to vacate the old small jug handle. They've conveyed that small jug handle to the developer who now owns the land and. They've conveyed that small jug handle to the developer who now owns the land in there. And the state owns the large jug handle. They're about to convey that large jug handle to the town. The town adopted an ordinance this month, I believe, to accept the dedication. So the town will own the jug handle. There is a separate agreement that we entered into years ago with the town that this developer will be responsible for the maintenance of that jug handle, even though it's, will be owned by the town. So there's a lot of history here, but that's just to give you an idea of how we're going to handle the lots, how that jug handle will be addressed and maintained and operated. Sorry.
No problem. Just to wrap up on some, some overall site details. So the, the overall parking for the entire of Phase One, there's proposed to be two thousand four hundred and ninety three parking spaces. Mr. Ray will offer testimony on parking analysis. He had done a shared parking analysis that, that again, he'll testify to. In our site plans, we applied the ordinance standard of the various uses. Not all cases are the uses listed in the township ordinance, but utilizing appropriate standards like ITE and working with Mr. Ray's office, we have determined that the total from required parking number is three thousand one hundred and seventy five. So a design waiver is required for the parking. That is consistent in scale to a waiver that we had received back at every other amendment, including June of twenty twenty one. Again, Mr. Ray will testify to the, to the shared parking. As I testified to already, the, the major component of the parking is the convention center, obviously, is the largest driver of the need for parking. And that the parking garage is is linked to that. So it's, it's a condition of our existing approval, certainly should carry forward, in my opinion, that the parking garage must be completed before a certificate of occupancy can be granted for the convention center. I would add to that, that when we talk about the project phase, and I've made reference to A, B and C, let me just go through that quickly. We have Phase A, which is the, what we call the inst, the island, the inside of the jug handle that Mr. Alfieri had just mentioned. Again, we have two of those buildings completed, one under construction and one soon to start. Phase B is now I forget. Phase B are the athletic fields at the rear of the site, which are completed, with the exception of the concession and the stage. Phase C is the air dome that's currently under construction. Phase D is the three pads up on the front, the food pads on the, to the east side of our Pine Drive extension between that and, and one ninety five. Phase D is the convention center hotels and parking garage. Again, the parking garage must can be completed before the convention. And then the last phase would be the medical research and the medical campus. The reason they're the last phase, although they would be preferred to be constructed first, given Mr. Carden Alley's history, which you've all heard about the medical research. But it is necessary for the project, in order for the project to fund that construction and operation, we need to have the, the improvements constructed to do so. So unfortunately, we prefer to have it as an earlier phase, but economics dictate that it be towards the end. And certainly I noted that the parking garage would be required before the COs granted for the, for the convention. It would also hold true for the later phase of the medical research, that if the medical research or campus were to get built, let's say out of turn, the garage would be needed for those as well. I wonder, that was a conversation I had this morning with Mr. Peters. That, that's, and, and that, the reason for that is that in the Phase F area or E, F area, I'm sorry, which is the medical research and campus, during dependency of Phase C, again, which is the air dome, that area will be utilized, as noted on the site plans, for temporary parking for the air dome. There's a, gonna be a stone area there that will be used for parking. So obviously, if, if those are built, we'd lose that temporary parking. So that's the reason for adding that, that caveat to the parking garage.
Can you talk about the roundabout and that intersection?
Yes, one of the requests, that's next on my list. One of the requests that we had made in our amendment request was to introduce a new concept of a roundabout in the intersection. That actually was, was, was suggested to my client and myself by a Monmouth County traffic engineer. Understand that Monmouth County has reviewed and approved all of these various traffic improvements of the jug handle and intersection because Monmouth Road is the boundary of Monmouth County. Their engineering office has jurisdiction over that. So we proposed that as part of this amendment. In further consultation with the board professionals and our own traffic professionals, we are withdrawing that because we, 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 we still, my client and I still believe in the concept, but there needs to be additional research and design done on that that we haven't had time to do before this meeting. So for purposes of this amended approval, we are simply reverting back to the signalized intersection that this board had approved in June of twenty twenty one. Which leads me to exhibit, I believe it's A five at the fifth page, Anthony, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry, before you go on, I just want to circle back if I could. Uh, you were looking for that, 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 where was my notes?
The C variance?
The C variance, the C variance for the buildings, the, the parking garage and the convention center?
Yes.
Within five feet of the, the property line?
Yes.
All right, so my, my, my question is, is there any negative testimony, positive, negative testimony to that? And how does that affect the property that, which I believe will be the warehouses to the rear? How, how does that moving of those structures affect that?
Let's, let's go then back to A, three please, Anthony. If you could zoom in, Anthony, if you don't mind, right? In fact, in fact, it might be, well, it might be better if you go to the first one. I'm sorry, Anthony, go to A one, it might be better. Yeah, if you don't mind, zoom in on, on, you know, slide it over and zoom, zoom in on this area. Still, it's still a little bit hard, but the, the answer is there is no effect because, again, that's an internal lot line. And, and as part of the coordination, again, it's all part of the same project, although as Mr. Alfieri said, a separate lot and blocks or separate, separate lots. There's a thirty foot access and, and utility easement that was granted by Phase One to Phase, or by Phase Two to Phase One. We have the rear loading drive, which, which accesses the rear of the convention center and the parking garage here I'm pointing at. And the design of those and the design of Phase Two remains completely unchanged as a result of this. All we did was, was slide the buildings closer to the line, to the, to the property line, which is a, you know, not a physical line, of course, it's just a, it's just a paper line. There's been no change at all to the loading zone, the loading drive, the, the roadway into Phase Two and the, and the landscaping, most importantly, that we had received approval for. Part of our testimony and part of our approval for, for amended Phase One in June of twenty twenty one was that there's a landscaped bamboo recall area between the rear of the hotel and the convention center to the warehouse. And that all remains unchanged as a result of this C variance.
Mr. Chairman, I represent the planning board as the planner for the board. And while I don't often like to agree with Mr. Borden, I am forced to agree that the area outside of the property line that's in that easement area is unchanged. So while he put his improvements closer to the property line, the area outside the property line, the improvements that are outside the property line that are in Phase One, I'm sorry, in Phase Two are unchanged. So if he pulled out the set of plans for the warehouse and laid them over this, there's no change to the phase, to the Phase Two plans.
Thank you for clarifying.
Well, but what's respectfully, just to follow up, Mr. Costanzo, I think what's important is, Mr. Borden, your testimony at least, that notwithstanding the fact that there's no change, there's also no negative effect by placing the buildings in Phase One closer to the lot.
Correct. I believe I had given that testimony, yes.
I'm just clarifying the point. I think it's also important, and Mr. Alfieri may be clarify this better than I, but it's important for understanding of the overall operation of the site, that there are several cross access easements that in fact Phase Two is in a different ownership that, at this point than, than Phase One as well?
Yeah, there, there's, there's several cross access utility easements, drainage easements, et cetera, which will carry over even into the westernmost portion as, as they get developed. Okay, Ian.
Just to wrap up on the, on the site plan, just basically the confirmed testimony I had given in May of twenty twenty one with the June twenty twenty one approval. As far as the intensity of the development for Phase One, we had looked at as part of that approval, the combined of Phase One and Phase Two, because that was the tract area that we call it. The ordinance requires that we conform to certain tract requirements, which we do under the HCMU zone. And the, the building in impervious coverages are permitted to be thirty and seventy five percent respectively. The combined total of Phase One and Two are twenty three percent and forty six percent respectively. Not in this current review, but in the review of last year, we were asked to apply the conservation overlay zone standards. That's a inordinate section in town that requires us to deduct environmentally sensitive areas from those impervious coverage calculations. Although it increases then, the percentages are still substantially less than the requirements being twenty seven percent and fifty five percent respectively. And, and I would note, not relevant to this hearing particularly, but just as a general statement, that when we add in Phase Three, which is now approved, and, and we'll certainly testify to this when we come back for Phase Four, because Phase Four, this board will see again, as I said, and that will be the accumulation of the entire project. Those percentages, well, actually, even though we're building more, those percentages will decrease. Because I think that's probably why Mr. Alfieri asked me to explain why these areas, these gray areas are here. Because once we, once we move into Phase Three and Four, it's on those properties that those substantial wetlands are located that insert, that serve to decrease those percentages. But then again, that, that's Phase Four, but, but just as part of this amendment, we are well within the 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 limitations for building an impervious coverage. Just the again, to repeat things that are not changed by this amendment, but just for the record, we have the statement of operations, which lists the, the normal hours of operation. Those remain unchanged from the June twenty twenty one approval. All of the maintenance obligations that this project has towards parking area sidewalks, landscaping, lighting, utilities, stormwater and buildings remains with the property owner. The refuse enclosures are continued. We don't change any of those with this proposal. They'll remain as approved by the board in June of twenty twenty one. All will remain, the property owner remains responsible for the collection of the refuse and the recycled materials. Separate containers are provided for those.
There, there was a solar component to the original, to the most recent approval that is not being changed. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. The solar component remains unchanged.
And that's a conditional use and all the conditions were met and continue to be met.
That's correct. And that, that applies, actually, there was also a question in the planner's review to ask us to confirm that the conditional use also applies to the hotels. All of the conditional use standards for the hotels and the solar remain unchanged, all remain complied with. And I think I was changed gears here at some point, Anthony, if you can go to that sheet you had up with the pedestrian with those blue lines on it. I think it was A four, if I remember correctly. This was in a, this is an exhibit that, that was part of the, of an important part of the amendment in, in June of twenty twenty one. I, I just felt it important to bring it back with the changes to the, to the site because the blue lines, recall, represent the pedestrian access. That's obviously a critical component of a large mixed use project like this, both for pedestrian interconnectivity between the uses and for safe access crossing these access drives. And, and basically, when you look at Phase A, B, the fields which are down below, if you scroll down, C, which is the air dome, D, those remain unchanged. We have the signalized intersection, the most critical component of it with the traffic control or the pedestrian controlled traffic signals. That all remains unchanged. We, we had the stop controlled pedestrian crosswalks, two of them. One located between the air dome and the medical research. Another one is just at the bottom of the page here, right there, at the athletic fields. Those remain unchanged from the original or the amended site plan approval granted in twenty twenty one. And we simply just, just added to that the pedestrian that is now proposed with the changed portion of the site, which is the convention parking and the hotels. So the, the connectivity is still there, the, 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 the controls are still there with the signal at the main intersection and various stop control locations. So I just wanted to make the board aware that we're obviously remained consistent with that. And then the last thing actually is the next exhibit, Anthony, if you don't mind. And this is a, I believe, a small detail, but, but it's the, it's a notable one because it's the one part of the job I can recall that, that we're actually making something smaller. That is, that, that we had signs approved as part of the original project. We had two types of signs. We have freestanding signs, which are the large, what we call project signs. We had received a variance at the amended site plan in June of twenty twenty one to increase the height of the main freestanding sign at the intersection of Pine Drive to forty five feet with the large animated panel. But in addition, for all those different tenants along Monmouth Road, there being seven of those, each of those has an individual, what we call a tenant sign. And, and our approvals till, till today have, have, contain a each of those signs complying with the sign ordinance, which allows a freestanding sign with a maximum height of sixteen feet and a signage area of seventy five square feet. We did receive a variance for the number of the signs, again, because of the vast frontage we have and the number of tenants that we have. So in Phase One, there are seven of these tenant signs. My client has decided to, to reduce those signs in size. There will still be one sign per tenant. That has not changed. But rather than a freestanding sign of sixteen feet high, we're proposing monument signs of six and a half feet high.
And how many of, of those monumental?
Those are, those are seven of those. So the, the number stays the same, the location stays the same. We're simply, and they did comply with the ordinance standards as far as height and area, but we're actually proposing standards much less than the ordinance requirements.
Through the chair, these signs will be changeable copy?
They will not be.
Will not?
No, the only, the only, I should say, with the exception of one, which is the, the gasoline sign for the seven eleven.
Yeah, and that's required to be by statute.
Correct.
To change pricing and everything for the gas station.
So other than the seven eleven sign, which requires a changeable copy for the gas price, the, the Taco Bell, the, the, the Popeyes, any of the other tenants will not have changeable copy, no.
So for the chair, the seven eleven sign is going to be similar to what you show here as the tenant, the amended sign, but what, just with changeable copy?
That's correct. It'll be the ground sign, not the freestanding.
Similar to what the quick check has out here.
That's correct.
Can we clarify too, in relationship, you have the, the main facility sign, which is now erected. This gas, so the gas lease, the gas, gas station is in the same proximity of that sign, isn't it?
That's correct.
So how far will the gas station sign be from the facility side?
It's, it's located west. Located farther from the Pine Drive intersection.
Because presently, that, the facility sign is on the west side of Pine Drive, correct?
That's correct. If you go back, I can, if you don't mind, Anthony, go back to the third page of the if you don't mind zooming in, Anthony, right up in here. Like a lot. Like a lot. Right, so here here's the seven eleven, uh, Pine Drive extension being here, of course. That is the freestanding sign that's been erected and is currently operating. The tenant sign for the seven eleven is located here. I would say it's approximately, uh, fifty feet to the west of it.
And again, that will only erect to sixteen feet?
To to six and a half feet.
I'm sorry, six and a half, okay, all right, thank you.
And then you can see the other tenant signs for the Building a Hundred, the Popeyes, the Taco Bell, and those are all in the same locations as currently approved. But again, we're proposing to make the signs smaller.
And are there wall mounted signs for any of the tenants, and if so, will they comply with?
Yeah, any wall mounted signs will obviously, will need to comply with the sign ordinance. That applies to all tenants.
Does that conclude your presentation?
I believe it does, yes.
If it does, I I want to circle back, if I could, to the basketball courts?
Yes.
You you testified, your testimony was six basketball courts?
That's correct.
And they're intended for practice?
It's an academy, it's actually run by, uh, I don't know if anybody knows J R Smith. Uh, Millstone resident, former professional, maybe current professional basketball player, it's his, it's his family, he's.
So is there any intention of any, any, um, bathroom facilities, um, locker rooms, uh, um, stadium seating?
There's no stadium seating.
So it's just really, just just basketball courts, any type of other facilities to support that?
No, no stadium seating, no spectator seating, no.
For for through the chair, again, for fear coming across as assisting the applicant, but having an eleven year old son who participates in buildings such as this. My understanding, looking at the plans, is similar to the Sportica design that has a second floor, uh, with three courts in a row.
Yes.
Or some, uh, there's a.
The one in Manalapan, you mean, yes, yes.
That's it, that's in Manalapan, there's also one in Monroe Township, that's, I forget the name of it. Also, that's what it appeared to me, similar to.
And before you get to board questions, I just had one last question, because and and the engineer will testify too, but there are several, or there are many technical comments contained within the board professional reports. Are there any, uh, comments that we can address as a condition of approval?
Uh, no.
Okay, I'm sorry, just I wanted to get that on, we'll go over it again.
Ask any of the other board members if you had questions before we bring up the next witness.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, because I can see some whispers.
D four?
Or A four?
A four.
A four, right.
Mr. Board, you testified that there's going to be at the suggestion of the, uh, county planning board. That there be a, a, um, calming area at that intersection?
Well, it's going to be signalized.
Signalized for stop, go, or is it just for walk, don't walk?
No, it's a full traffic signal with pedestrian controlled push buttons.
So that's the calming device, it's, you're not going to put a circle in?
No.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, so if there's any other questions, we can, uh, think about it, and I'm going to conclude this. Bring up the next witness, I'm going to take a ten minute break right now, but.
So did you understand what the chairman indicated that before you're completely released, Mr. Board? If after this ten minute break, the board may have further questions?
He'll be here till the bitter end, don't worry, he's not going anywhere.
I would take in.
Thank you. Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, we neglected to cover one point, um, that I'd like to just get on the record, so.
Right, thinking about it during the, uh, break, if you don't mind calling up A three, Anthony. But I had briefly mentioned, uh, with the athletic fields, we have a storage building in the southeastern corner of the site, I'm sorry, the one above this, Anthony. In fact, right there, if you could stay right there, that's perfect. We have a storage building that's located in the, uh, southeastern corner of the site. It's located right on that property line, it's the same property line between Phase One and Phase Two. Uh, and then we have the maintenance building for the field area, which is uh, on the, uh, western property line of Lot Two, uh, joins Lot, uh, Phase Four, which is Lot One. Again, with zero setback. Just to make sure the record is clear, we have the C two variances for each of those, again, to interior lot lines with no effect on perimeter properties. Nothing has changed in this amendment with those two buildings. But just want to make sure the record is clear that, uh, to the extent that we uh, I think we had received those C two variances in the in the previous approval, but just I'm not certain of that, so just want to be really careful and and just put that on the record that those two C two variances are required as well. Again, those are unchanged by this amendment, each of them are less than two thousand square feet, they're they're single story uh, buildings on interior lot lines that have no effect on the perimeter uh, properties around the project and thereby have no negative, uh, substantial impact on either the zone plan or public, uh.
Thank you, Ian.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Ray.
Do you need any of the exhibits up here? Mr. Ray, thank you for raising your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation, and through the chairman, uh, your credentials?
Uh, John Ray, R E A, I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates, traffic and transportation engineers. Fourteen thirty one Lakewood Road, Manasquan, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, my field of specialty is traffic engineering. That also includes parking consulting services. And I've testified before this board on numerous occasions as an expert witness, thank you.
And and Mr. Ray, your office has been the traffic consultant during the entirety of this project.
And the file is getting quite large, yes.
I'm sure. If you had college age kids, they, your, their education would be paid for.
Yeah, but that was taken care of a long time.
I know that, go ahead. So, um, you did a study for parking, particularly for this project, since it changed and, um, and you submitted that as part of the submission to the board, is that correct?
That is correct, and, uh, the primary, um, focus of my analysis and my reason for being here tonight is the parking analysis. Because, uh, as Mr. Boarden has indicated, we're coming in for an amendment to Phase One, and, uh, what I needed to do was go through a whole, whole shared parking analysis. Because as he indicated upfront, when he testified, we do need relief for the number of parking spaces that we're proposing. And when we go through some of the numbers, I don't want to bore people to the point where their eyes glaze over, I I want to keep it as succinct as I possibly can, but I can tell you that doing the shared parking analysis for the various uses within Phase One, the amended plan that we're sure now I gave Ian is laser pointed back, mine's running out of juice. Have it back again. This one works, yes. So, uh, what I will testify to tonight is the shared parking analysis, but before I get into the shared parking analysis, I just want to try to lay the foundation for what shared parking is. Uh, there may be some new members on the board, I I know I see a lot of familiar faces, but uh, this is a mixed use project, as has been testified to, we're going to have recreational uses, we're going to have a convention center, we're going to have a medical campus with with uh, an educational facility and a research facility, we're going to have restaurants, we're going to have a convenience store with gasoline out at the intersection of Pine Drive and five thirty seven. So this basically classifies, yeah, itself as a, as a classic shared parking scenario. And the reason is because all of these different uses that are here, these mixed uses, they don't all have a coincident peak parking demand. Uh, there will be different times of the day that the parking, uh, demand with each one of the uses is at a peak, when it might not be at a peak for one of the other ones. There's also a seasonality issue here. Uh, because we have the outdoor recreational fields, for example, they are going to be busiest parking wise when the weather permits and people can be outside using the outdoor fields. Uh, in the dead of winter, certainly around this time of the year, the outdoor fields aren't going to be generating much, if any, parking at all, they're probably not going to be used. Uh, doing some research, for example, into the convention center. Uh, the Urban Land Institute, which is another organization which publishes, uh, parking data for these uses, has indicated that, uh, based on their research data, convention centers, the slowest time of the year for convention centers is during the summer. And that's when a lot of the other uses here will be busy. The busiest months for convention centers, according to U L I, are October, November and February. So there's a, it re- it really took me quite some time to sit down, do the research, go through the Urban Land Institute Shared Parking Book and look at the, uh, the town's ordinance requirements for these different uses in order to come up with a shared parking study, which which is basically summarized in my January fifth, two thousand and twenty two uh, report. So, the way this is going to work out, in my estimation, from a parking.
Mr. Ray, just through the chair, and I may be jumping too early on this, so the whole, the entire premises, premise for the shared parking is that some sort of natural selection, so to speak, my words, will preclude the outdoor facility from being used in the winter, winter, the convention center has less demand in the summer on average. I I guess, and you may have dealt, the client may have dealt with this in the statement of operation, but I think there was already testimony, right, that the fields are leased to a tenant. The basketball facility is going to be leased to a tenant. The convention center operator in all likelihood will be a tenant. Who's the decider to to ensure that, notwithstanding the the global premise for your testimony that, um, J R Smith is not going to schedule a tournament at the same time that um, USBL is going to schedule a tournament, uh, you know, in the spring in baseball, and you're not going to have a, uh, a show at the convention center?
Mr. Cardinelli is going to be the manager of the entire project, that's my understanding, and.
That's, that's correct.
From wrong, yes.
All the, and and just to make it clear, the leases have conditions that, um, ensure that there's not cross use such that the premise for your analysis goes AWIRED? Sorry to be articulate.
I can't, I don't know the answer, I I'm not doing the leases, so I can't answer that.
Mr. Chairman, for my question, along the same lines as, as Mr. Gertner's, uh, question. Since Mr. Boarden testified that the parking garage is going to be constructed in association with the the.
Convention Center, yes.
Is the parking garage considered part of the global parking, shared parking?
Yes.
Is it going to be restricted only to the convention center or the users of the convention center or the or the hotel?
It will primarily be used by the convention center, but it will also be part of the global parking, you know, i- if you will, that's provided for the project in 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 some, so it can be used by anybody, not just the convention center, yes.
In your calculation, is she?
Yes. And so, um, you know, at this point, uh, I I want to go through some of the numbers and and just start out with the calculation that Mr. Boarden did, and I hope I'm going to be consistent with the number he just testified to, because there have been some changes. Uh, I have calculated that, based on Mr. Boarden's, um, zoning chart, that the total requirement for parking is three thousand one hundred and twenty nine parking spaces. Is that correct? Three thousand one two nine is the total parking requirement. We are providing two thousand four hundred and ninety three. And there's one more thing before I I I go on and and testify in more detail on the shared parking, there's also another scenario that develops here that, which is very, very important. Uh, a lot of the, uh, the uses that are upfront, the pad sites, the retail and the restaurants. It is our expectation that people that are already here, either at the convention center at the ball fields, the medical campus, the indoor air dome, there will be in my estimation, a lot of pedestrian traffic that will walk over, and that's why we are signalizing this internal four way intersection. We are providing crosswalks, pedestrian walk, don't walk signals. Uh, this was a, an item of some concern at the planning board meetings, and the planning board really focused in on this, on on the other on the, uh, other phases that I've been involved with. So we did agree, and it's in the plans, we're going to signalize this, uh, internal intersection have all of the necessary pedestrian amenities, crosswalks, walk, don't walk signals, because it is my expectation that a good amount of the business that these restaurants and uses up along Route five thirty seven are going to generate will be pedestrian activity from the the recreation uses, the convention center, the medical campus, they're going to be able to walk through these facilities, and that will also limit the parking demand in those areas. So in order to do my parking analysis, the first thing I took a look at was, I took a look at the two different areas up by Route five thirty seven, which are basically self-contained, because we have, I don't want to hit Sal in the head with the laser. Um, we have our service road, you know, it's been called a drug handle, it's really a service road that comes in from Route five thirty seven. The two inside the service road, the two areas up along Route five thirty seven are basically west of the service road. And it is my expectation that the parking within those areas will be self-sufficient to serve the demand that is generated from the traffic coming in off five thirty seven plus the pedestrian traffic that walks across from the the balance of the project. And let me give you some numbers for what we're looking for in terms of, um, parking relief. For the, for Phase A, which is the area I'm pointing to right here, which is the more westerly of the two areas up toward Route five thirty seven, two hundred and ninety three spaces are required, two forty are provided. Phase D is the more easterly of the two areas up along Route five thirty seven that I'm pointing to here. And for Phase D, three hundred and ninety three spaces are required, three fifty four are provided. And again, these numbers are cumulative numbers that were generated based on your ordinance requirements. Didn't take into account shared parking, didn't take into account internal capture rates from the part, from the pedestrians that can walk across to 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 get to those uses. So it's my opinion that those areas are going to be basically self-sufficient. They will have enough parking to handle their parking needs. So really, what I focused on with the parking garage and the balance of the parking that's provided is everything that is, um, I'm looking at the, everything that is east of the service road is what I really focused on in order to make sure that the parking that was in that area was going to be adequate to serve the different uses, the convention center, the hotels, the air dome, uh, recreational fields and the, uh, the medical campus. So, going back to my report, if you subtract from the two thousand four hundred and ninety three spaces that we're providing for the entire project as a whole, if you subtract the parking that we're providing for the two areas up along Route five thirty seven, that leaves us with one thousand eight hundred and ninety nine parking spaces, and would include the garage, the balance of the parking east of the service road is one thousand eight hundred and ninety nine parking spaces. That amount of parking needs to be sufficient to handle all of the uses that are east of the service road. I went through my shared parking analysis for a summer season and for a non-summer season. Went through all of the different uses, used the Urban Land Institute numbers, used the Jackson Township ordinance numbers where it was necessary. And I've calculated that the peak parking demand for the summer will be one thousand four hundred and forty spaces. And we've got nineteen hundred, I'm rounding it up to nineteen hundred, the eighteen ninety nine. So, uh, it's my conclusion that we have adequate parking for the summer peak season. And the reason why the summer is as low as it is is basically because uh, the convention center of the summer is not going to be a peak month, as I've indicated before, the peak months for the convention center are October, November and February. I made a, what I think is a very conservative assumption, that the convention center would be generating seventy five percent of its peak parking demand during those three peak months, that it would be seventy five percent of that during the summer, which I think is probably a little bit on the conservative side. But I wanted to make sure that when I had a decision to make, I I took that approach. And so fourteen forty would be. And so fourteen forty would be less than the nineteen hundred that we've provided, and the summer would be, uh, adequate. The other, the other reason why the summer parking demand is. I wouldn't say as low as it is, but the recreational air dome, again, that is an indoor, uh, facility. That will be busiest during the times of the year when the weather won't permit people to be outside on the outdoor fields. And, uh, so, so the recreational indoor air dome is going to be busiest during the colder, if you want to just say, non-summer months. And I can tell you that, um, we did the traffic study and the parking study for Sportica in Manalapan. Uh, that building is a little bit bigger than our, our air dome, this is a hundred and sixty-one thousand square feet, Ian, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, the Sportica building is closer to a hundred and eighty thousand square feet. We did all of their parking and traffic studies from the ground up. They had four hundred parking spaces to support the, um, the building, and for the most part, that was adequate. They had a couple of special events where they ran over the four hundred, it was unusual, it happened on occasion, but for the most part. The parking that was provided there was, was adequate for the normal, everyday operation of Sportica. This, we believe, will be similar. And as, uh, I, I know that there was a discussion I heard before, there are, there were like, if I'm not mistaken, there were eight basketball courts, seven or eight basketball courts up on the second floor of Sportica. We're proposing something pretty similar for the air dome, I think it's six, if I'm not mistaken. So I think it's a very similar use. And what this is all leading up to is me to tell you that all my experience with Sportica, the summer months were the least intense months with respect to parking. Uh, the spring, the fall and the winter, the parking lot was, you know, pretty well close to being full on weekends, they had leagues, they had things going on. Peak parking occurred during the non-summertime. So that's why the fourteen forty, that number I came up with for, for the summer. That assumes one hundred percent peak parking for all of the restaurants and the retail and the things upfront. It assumes peak parking for the two hotels, peak parking for the ballfields, seventy-five percent peak parking for the convention center. And I think I assumed fifty percent, if I'm not mistaken, for the air dome. And I think that's a conservative analysis too, based on our experience at Sportica, which was really a lot less than fifty percent, uh, peak parking. I then did a non-summer analysis, and again, for the non-summer, I assumed. The convention center would be at a peak, it would, it would be generating its peak parking. Uh, the ballfields, I assumed, would be seventy-five percent. I still, I wanted to make a conservative assumption, because even though. I, I felt that the outdoor ballfields would be somewhat less than at peak during the non, you know, during spring. Fall, and I know during the spring and the fall, the fields would be busy, they, you know, but, but maybe not as busy as they would be in the summer. So I assume seventy-five percent, a hundred percent for the, um, convention center, a hundred percent for the air dome. And a hundred percent for everything else, including the hotels. And the number that we came up with, that actually came up, out to be a higher number. One thousand six hundred and seventy parking spaces required for the non-summer peak, and again, we have nineteen hundred. So what I've concluded after, you know, running through these numbers is that the parking supply will be adequate. Because of the shared parking scenario and because of the pedestrian activity, the internal capture. That the, um, record, the retail and, and restaurant uses will have. We've got a very captive audience right here, there are going to be a lot of people. There could be, at the numbers I just ran up through, there could be fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred cars parked in this area where we have nineteen hundred parking spaces. And if they want something to eat. It's right here, they don't have to go out onto the highway, they can walk there, we've provided those pedestrian amenities at the signalized intersection. The other thing I wanted to mention was that in discussing this with Mr. Cardinelli, he's going to be the manager of the entire project. Uh, I, I think this is part of what's been submitted to the board. There will be an agreement with Hurricane Harbor to use their offsite, to use their parking lot during the. Non-summer season when Hurricane Harbor is not open, when we really need that parking, if, if necessary. We will run a shuttle from Hurricane Harbor, if necessary, from their parking lot. In order to support any overflow for the, uh, non-summer season events that are going to occur here. I'm not sure it's going to be necessary, but the one thing, yes, yes, Mr. Nogarian.
How does that, how does that work?
Not the traffic engineer. Yeah. I know, I know.
There's an agreement with, uh, Six Flags when this group actually purchased a lot of this property in Phase One from Six Flags. As part of that agreement, um, we've allowed Six Flags to use our site during non-peak if they needed, vice versa. They, we have agreed to shuttles, either side could shuttle to the other, and there's this private, separate agreement between Six Flags and the developer. And, and they both have to have insurance name in the other party, it's a standard agreement.
It's not, it's not a land use issue.
Right.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay, the last thing I wanted to. The last thing I wanted to mention was, uh, in discussing the overall project with Mr. Cardinelli, uh, there is the, uh, expectation that. Several times during the year, there may be special events that would generate a need for parking beyond. What I've just testified to, which would be normal routine operation. And Mr. Cardinelli has agreed to, A, include the hurricane, you know, have a cross-access agreement with Six Flags to use the Hurricane Harbor parking lot during the. Times of the year when they don't need it. And B, there will be a traffic management plan, he's agreed to develop a traffic management plan. With the assistance of the Jackson Township Police Department, we will sit down with the police, we will work that traffic management plan out. This is a very common thing that is done for special events. I recently represented Monmouth University, a- as you know, they have a fairly large, uh. Basketball arena holds about forty-two hundred people and a football stadium that holds over four thousand people. And they worked out a traffic management plan with the local Monmouth Police Department and the West Long Branch Police. It's done all the time, and Mr. Cardinelli will, uh, sit down with the Jackson Township Police. His professionals would be, will be part of that, and we'll work out a traffic management plan with the assistance of the police, uh, for special events.
So are you going to help self-contain?
That would be my expectation, yes.
That was my concern, because when those convention centers open up.
Yeah.
So, Mr. The Chairman and Mr. Ray, if it's you, or maybe it's back to Mr. Borden. I think before the planning board, there, it, there was substantial testimony as to the design elements. Of the pedestrian access to ensure that folks are not, using the chairman's word.
Right.
Flying all over, that it's not, that from the design perspective, the applicant has done, my recollection of the testimony, please confirm this. There's more than just simple sidewalks to direct pedestrians to, you utilize this. You've created some sort of urban landscape to sort of direct pedestrian traffic to this use, but.
And, and I think there was actually, as I was watching before during Mr. Borden's testimony, Anthony had a, uh, there was a, an exhibit that showed the connectivity of the sidewalks.
But more than that, you, that, those are lines on a piece of paper. There was testimony previously about some of the design elements that assist in directing pedestrians. To maintain themselves on those blue lines, so to speak, right?
Well, there, there will be signage, for example, there'll be signage that directs people from the recreational uses if they want to get to the restaurants. We will direct them to the sidewalk system that will connect to the restaurants. And again, all of the necessary pedestrian amenities will be present at that four-way intersection with the signal. And, and.
Trying to refresh your recollection, or you're telling, or mine is wrong. But for instance, I think there's, again, I keep focusing on design elements, I think some of the lighting. Okay. Along the sidewalks is a little bit extra special, right, aren't they? Some element, there's elements of trying to direct the folks.
Yeah, Mr. Borden says yes, I may have missed that, yeah.
My recollection is not incorrect, that you've done a little, the applicant's done a little bit more than simply putting a, you know, a concrete sidewalk along the way. Uh, to ensure that pedestrians are focused on using, um, the space. It's sort of like an urban, um, cityscape for direction of those folks back and forth.
Mr. Borden has indicated that is the case, and since he's the principal designer, I will, I'll go with that. And the last thing I also wanted to mention is, uh, as Ian said upfront, uh, one of the things that we did do is we flipped the, um, parking garage over to the area where the, um. Convention center is, because that's going to be the primary driver of the need for the parking garage will be the convention center. So those folks won't have to cross a road at all, they'll be on the proper side of the, uh, of the roadway.
And, and all the road, the road improvements, the drug handles, et cetera, have been approved by the county, um, constructed, as Mr. Borden said. And they're not impacted in any way by this amendment.
No, the road, the road impro, as you, the road layout, as you see, it has been approved by both Monmouth County and Ocean County. We actually had both county engineering departments looking at this, so it was quite an extensive process to get to this point. But, uh, yeah, both, both of the county engineering departments have looked at this and approved it.
So for Mr. Ray.
Chair, uh, so we're not going to hear testimony on site circulation? Only I asked, I raised that question only because the parking garage has been moved.
Yes.
So in that vein, fact that the parking garage has been moved, and there's, I, I would like to hear, if we could, hear testimony as to. Circulation in and out of the parking garage, because the parking garage has also been moved five feet towards the property line.
Yes.
And I seen this diagram, you have an exit or an entrance at the east side, northeast side of the parking garage. So I'm, I'm hoping to get testimony.
Yes.
As to circulation to that parking garage.
It looks like there are two entrances, and Ian, correct me if I'm wrong, there are two entrances and exits from the parking garage.
Was it one entrance and one exit? Uh, how, how is?
I think they're both two-way, if I'm not mistaken, or is that correct? And I think, Mr. Costanza, the one that you're mentioning is this one, which is over near the property line.
Correct.
That would be one of the ways it's in and out, and there's also an entrance and an exit in this area, so there's two ways into and out of the garage.
But the fact that the building itself has moved five feet to the property line, that access is then on to the other piece of property, how do we rectify that? Or is that?
It, is it, does, does, yeah, it actually does go on to the other property, I, you know.
The easement that we referred to earlier, there's an access for utilities, access, et cetera, uh, thirty feet wide, thirty feet wide.
Right in this area here, yeah, okay. I mean, I'm, I'm just looking at how the cars getting into and out of the garage property lines, you know, didn't mean a lot to me when I was looking at the circulation plan, but that's the explanation.
And again. Uh, thank you.
Yes, Jeff. Mr. Ray, um, one thing that kind of gives me some concern here. Is you mentioned that there was going to be an agreement with Six, Six Flags for using their parking when, when necessary.
Yes.
Why did that even come up as a, as an issue? Let me tell you why I, I have that concern. I didn't, I looked at your calculations relative to the number of parking spaces required versus the number of parking spaces provided. And the number of parking spaces provided is twenty-two percent less than the parking spaces required. You also testified that in the summertime, the convention center would probably not be using in great detail. And in summertime, it's when the baseball or the, the fields will be used. But nobody, if there's parking problem, nobody's going to use the, the fields, it's going to walk over to Great Adventure to park their cars. So there must have been some concern in someone's mind that there may be a parking problem here, so we better look at, at, at Six Flags for alternative.
And Mr. Hurley, it, it might, you know, all right, I, I'll let Ian, Ian.
If I could just give you a timeline, and then Ian could fill in the blanks.
My thought was it would be for special events.
Yes, special events, and Six, the Six Flags agreement predates many of these improvements, because that was when. We s- actually signed a contract to buy Six Flags property, which was probably five years ago. So it was really a special event concern, but Ian.
Understand the premise and the whole rationale for having the cross-access was not for parking. It was driven by the overall concept of this project and its relationship to Six Flags. In other words, this property has always been identified, if you've heard my testimony going back to the beginning, when we started this project. Five years ago, this property has always been identified as a commercial destination, right, it's some, it's special, there's nothing else like it in Jackson. And why is it special? Because it's between Six Flags and the state highway, between one ninety-five. So the concept was to have uses here that would be complimentary to Six Flags, obviously the crown jewel, I would argue, of, of Jackson Township. So the concept behind the cross-access was to allow people, customers of Six Flags, if they're parked in Six Flags and in the park, they could take an internal shuttle. And come to a restaurant or a ballfield. And conversely, our people could go to the park, if they're saying, if, if, if somebody, parents have a child playing. In the, a tournament in the field, and they have other children, or they want to go to Six Flags, they can take the tram over to Six Flags. So. So it wasn't, it wasn't driven by parking.
The tram that you're testifying to is going to go out on the public.
No, no, if you, if you go back to the, uh, Bay One, Anthony, if you don't mind.
Bay One?
Yes. The, there is a, uh.
Further down, yeah, okay.
Again, uh, here's the property, here's Hurricane Harbor parking, that's that gray areas there. There is a, it's a little hard to see because it's, it's a small scale, but there's an internal driveway that runs. Connects, that will ultimately connect, and this will be really part of our Phase Four testimony when we appear here in a couple of months. That will, can, that's why we, we, that will connect from Phase One all the way through to, to Six Flags. And this is the, the easement that, that we've referenced that exists. Is between this Phase Three property and, and the Hurricane Harbor parking. So they will, there will be absolutely, none of that tram would, would occupy a public road, it would all be in our internal drive.
With Phase Three, it's going to be after Phase Two, after Phase One, right? So that whole Phase Three area, as you just pointed out, is not even going to be improved when the convention center is up.
I, I would argue it will be, uh, there, there's no condition in any approval for that, but, but I would argue that it will be. Uh, Phase Three is running concurrently with Phase Two. They're, they're separate.
My question is still to Mr. Ray, the twenty-two percent reduction in what's provided versus what's required. You're satisfied, in your opinion, you're satisfied that that is sufficient?
I, I am, because of the shared parking, the seasonality differences between the different uses, the time of day differences. And the pedestrian activity that will, you know, partake of, you know, the, the restaurants that are up along Route 537, they'll be able to walk there. Uh, we have a captive audience, yes.
If there is a peak season. During that peak, the twenty-two percent, in your opinion, is not a problem, twenty-two percent reduction is not a problem.
It, it's not, it's not, Mr. Hurley, and let me go back one and, and just say, I don't think it's really twenty-two percent. I, I, I didn't want to go through too many numbers, but when Ian did his calculations for the convention center, he. I know that, okay, but I, okay, well, I'll leave it at that, yeah. That the Urban Land Institute actually, um. Recommend six spaces per thousand square feet for the, uh, convention center instead of ten. So there's actually, I think we've, oh, in, in Mr. Borden's zoning table, I think he's overestimated the parking demand by about four hundred parking spaces because of that. So I, I hope that answered your question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since Mr. Miskovich retired, our office has taken over as the traffic consultants for the board. We also have a number of, um, professional transportation operation engineers on staff who have worked with Mr. Miskovich and Mr. Ray's firm in the past. Um, we've had an opportunity to look at the report, we find it satisfactory. The assumptions that Mr. Ray's firm are. Conservative. We don't think they've taken exception. Or tried to underestimate something. Quite frankly, this is a for-profit enterprise. They don't build enough parking and people don't show up, they're not making revenue. But I think all of us have seen a retail center, a shopping center, a school, that, that, that we've designed for the parking that's in an ordinance. And it's never busy. We've seen retail centers that are only busy on Black Friday. We've seen sports facilities that. that don't, that have too much parking. Um, we believe that they've met the requirements for a shared parking arrangement. Now, I think Mr. Ray and, and I would both have to admit that there are no black and white standards to say what reduction in parking is permitted by shared parking. But I used to tell the story, what really is shared parking? An office building and a bowling alley. Things that have peak hours from eight to five, and things that have peak hours after hours. Um, in this particular case, they've taken the peak hours for each of the individual uses and added them together across the hours of the day, and come up with a reasonable estimation of what their need would be. And I have to tell you, there's no purpose served by underestimating what's required. So I do believe that they've taken either Jackson Township Ordinance standards or Institute for Transportation Engineers, IT, the Traffic Engineers Bible, requirements for parking uses that aren't in the local Jackson land use ordinance, and they've applied them correctly to determine if the peaks that occur at different times of the year would be sufficiently served by the parking arrangement that they have. Um, I think we've, we've started to have discussions, I think Mr. Costanzo started asking, what about site circulation to the parking deck? Um, you know, do we think there's enough parking in Phase A, which is under construction, or Phase B, when it's fully occupied? Um, we understand there's going to be some gravel parking area, which is an overflow, which quite frankly, until the medical research building is built, will be available to the entire site. So if you think about this in terms of, I believe, it's six phases, five of the phases will be built, and there'll still be an area of four hundred gravel parking spaces that the applicant hasn't taken into account in his shared parking study. Um, and again, we, we'd sort of bash him over the head if he did, because at some point, it's going to become a construction site and they're going to build it. And those people will have to go park in the parking deck across the street, which is the main parking area. There's twelve hundred and seventy-five spaces in that parking deck. So while it's not an easy path from A to B, I can tell you that we can get from A to C by using this shared parking arrangement, and I think they've made the right assumptions. Um, I've seen them used on other projects that have been built. Obviously, there's not another project that's local to us that has these types of uses. But when Mr. Ray spoke about the Sportica up in Manalapan, um, or other shared parking arrangements, um, I do believe that they've found a reasonable alternative to just simply asking for twenty percent relief. And I think they've provided sufficient information for the board to act on the application as it relates to the shared parking arrangement.
Okay, so is your client, uh, concluded his presentation?
Traffic is finished, yes. We, we still have an engineer.
Through the chair, if I may, Mr. Ray, I ask this every time we meet on this project, regarding the off-site, the intersection of one ninety-five to five thirty-seven, is your client petitioning the state, the federal government, whomever, to improve that intersection? Uh, not intersection, interchange?
Yeah, I do not believe my client has done that. I testified at the planning board, we've had numerous meetings with the two county engineering departments. It was my understanding that the two counties, Monmouth and Ocean, were going to get together, and they were going to put together what we call a problem statement, and they were going to send it to the NJDOT. It was not going to be my client's responsibility. I don't know whether they've done that or not.
I, I know it's not your, it's, it's an off-site issue, but it affects your client.
Absolutely, and we understand that. And it's, you know, it's part of a broader regional issue that's been there for a while, and we're, we're not saying that the interchange works properly during peak hours, because we know there are issues, but, um, that's what we pay taxes for. They got to fix it. Yeah. Okay, uh, Anthony, could you put back up A three, I guess? Thank you. All right, there will be an entrance and an exit at this location right here, and if you can see, there's this main spine road that comes in, the extension of Pine Drive, there'll be an entrance into and an exit out of the parking garage right here. And if someone decides to come out of this exit instead, they would be directed to come down this loop road and connect and come out to the traffic signal. There, there will be signage directing them to do that. Yeah, let me take a look at that. Actually, they could do that. It, uh, no, they can't, they can't. I'm sorry. They, they would have to come out and follow the main spine road. There's no connecting road here behind the convention center that would allow them to... I, I might need to punt that to Mr. Borden, because he's the designer.
We, we wanted to direct all that traffic down to that main drive. The, the area behind the convention, which is here in the hotel, that's simply a loading zone. There, there's no connection here. So, no member of the public can go behind the convention in the hotel, other than loading traffic. I understand. No, we, but again, we have the stop-controlled pedestrian intersections here and the light up here, so we're trying to get all those cars onto the main access drive.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if I might, um, I, I certainly like the dialogue, I like the ideas. I like to make sure that we talk an issue through. So, while I understand that, as you come out, we'll call it the rear entrance, or the rear exit of the building, that you can't make a left, because it's the, sort of the, the loading area for the convention center and the loading area for the hotel. The thing that would bother me the most about doing it is, once you get up to that spine road, that's where the tractor-trailers come out. And so now what we would do to alleviate your concern about the Pine Drive extension, is now I'm going to take people who are there for recreational purposes, they're going to come out to an area where we may have tractor-trailer and industrial use. And quite frankly, I, I, I'm not sure I'd arm wrestle you for it, but I'd probably flip a coin to say, I'm not sure I want to mix those two types of traffic at that location. But I don't mind having the conversation so that we discuss it, and we, you know, just because we put it on paper doesn't make it right. But I, but I appreciate the comment. I think it, it deserves an airing, and I think we should sort of explain amongst ourselves. You know, it, is, is this best serve the users of the parking deck? And, and I would say to you that it wouldn't be my first choice to mix the people who are using the parking deck with the exit from the warehousing area. And that, so I'd leave that as the, sort of the counterpoint to your suggestion.
Well, what? Well, event, eventually, everybody coming out of the parking garage is going to get to either this locate, yeah, this location right here, either coming out of this entrance-exit or the one over here. I think the thing that we tried to do in order to minimize the pedestrian vehicular conflicts, if you look at the plan, uh, the parking garage contains twelve hundred and seventy-five parking spaces. This area right here in front of the, where, which will basically serve the two hotels, there's another couple of hundred spaces there. Uh, there really shouldn't be a lot of pedestrian activity from the air dome and from medical campus across this road, or vice versa. There, you know, mo, most of the pedestrian should be contained, the pedestrian activity will be contained to the right side of where the cars are coming out of the garage, and there shouldn't be, because out of, out of the eighteen, when I say eighteen ninety-nine, out of the almost nineteen hundred parking spaces that are in this area right here, including the spaces by the ball fields, probably, I could add fifteen or sixteen hundred of the nineteen, are in this area right here, and wouldn't require pedestrian crossing of this main road. And that's why we moved, that's one of the reasons why we moved the, the parking garage, you may not have been, was originally on the other side of the road. And that became a little bit of an issue for us, and that's one of the reasons why we moved it over adjacent to the convention center and the hotels, because that's where the primary parking demand would be. So it, it has been thought about, but it's, like Mr. Peter said, it's, it's, it was a good point. The air dome is right here.
No, the park.
The parking, there's, there's some parking along this area. Ian, I don't know what the numbers are. Yeah, it's, um, probably a hundred to two hundred spaces. And, and some of the air, air dome parking will have to happen in, in the area I'm circling here, and/or in the parking deck. Probably in the area right here. And they would have to cross the road.
A follow-up to that question, is there any, um, formula to know what the air dome generates in, in what traffic?
Uh, yeah, we, based on the Sportica parking counts, we're anticipating, based on, this is going to be a little bit smaller than Sportica. I think Ian's calculated about three hundred and fifty parked cars at a maximum for the air dome. So that, that's the approximate number. And of course, people being people, they will try to find parking spaces where they can on the proper side of the road, but some of them certainly may have to use the parking area across the, uh, across the road. It, 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 it's very hard, if not impossible, to provide for the exact number of parking spaces you need adjacent to each one of the uses. That's why it all has to be integrated in a proper fashion with respect to, you know, the pedestrian crossings and the pedestrian activity.
Ju, just to be clear, so, internal to the site, there's going to be a traffic light at the Pine Street extension and the service road.
Correct, right here.
And then where else?
Uh, that'll be the only internal traffic signal.
Okay. But so, as pedestrians cross, as you go further down on the page.
Yes.
Towards the ball fields, those two other areas where we have pedestrian connectivity.
Yes.
Traffic controls. Can you explain what each of those are?
Uh, there, there will be crosswalks, and Ian, correct me if I'm wrong, did we, did we go with four-way stops at those locations? We did. They'll, uh, it, look, this is going to be a, a, oh, A four, okay.
Because I believe we've referred to them as stop-controlled crosswalks?
So, yeah. All right, if we scroll down, um, the dash blue line show where the sidewalk connections are going to be. There, there will be a, okay, there'll be a, there'll be connections down in this lower area, and a connection right here to get across. And there will be, this is going to be a four, you can see the four corners, this is going to be a four-way stop, and this is going to be a four-way stop as well, too.
And so, for the board, while I'm certainly not testifying for the applicant, when the, and perhaps I could get someone from the applicant to sort of concur, when we first opened the ball fields, um, there were participants, teenagers, walking from the ball fields to the Wawa across the street. Okay? This, quite frankly, that was good news, place is busy. Bad news is, it was a construction site, and I said, we have to do a better job of, not necessarily pedestrian connectivity, but protection. And so that's why we asked for this type of plan, because we understand the board's concerned about the safety. This job doesn't get built in six months. It's not like a twenty-lot housing subdivision. This is going to be a construction site for a number of years. And so, to the extent that we make sure that we have a plan like this, so that it can be referred to, so the town engineer knows that the board wants the pedestrian connectivity and safety measures put in place with the first phase. So as you start to connect the ball fields to the, um, the food area, you know, there are a number of routes. And if we funnel people to the correct places, we're going to limit the conflicts that those, quite frankly, children are going to have with motor vehicles. And that, quite frankly, is our safety responsibility, is to put a plan like this together. So, I think they've done a reasonable job of presenting something to us, understanding that we can't always be in charge of teenagers. And they're going to, they're going to decide that they want to go someplace, and if we give them the path, the best path, and quite frankly, I think this path, this plan at this point is a reasonable plan, um, certainly to be reviewed and approved and commented on by our traffic safety department. I think we've then put forth, um, our, our best plan to protect, protect pedestrians who may be going from one section of the site to the other. Now, you know, we, we saw that pedestrians wanted to get to a food source from the ball fields. The only thing that was built was the ball fields and the main road to get to the ball fields. So people walked up the main road. As we build more of the improvements, and with the phasing plan, we can say, these pedestrian connectivity and safety measures have to be in place, so that you can get from point A to point B. And again, since there's six different phases, there's going to be some crossing of those things. It won't just be one straight point. So that's why you see so many different crossings on this. It's so that one person can get from the air dome back to a hotel, or from the hotel down to the ball fields. Um, and again, I, I appreciate the board members' concern and comments about what works best. And quite frankly, while the applicant's going to be the owner, there's people sitting here that are going to be the users. So I, I think it's a, I think it's worth the time and effort to go through the discussion of, could we do it better? And explain to the board, and explain to the applicant, why we think these things should be done. So by all means, you, let's flesh it all out.
Thank you, Ernie. Any other questions for traffic?
So, part of me being the, the new guy up here, um, your summer analysis, uh, Mr. Ray, or the non-summer analysis, rather, ball field at seventy-five percent, convention, convention at a hundred percent, air dome at a hundred percent. I think it's probably safe to say that if the air dome is successful, it will be at a hundred percent year-round. As the father of athletes, basketball indoor is primarily used, I don't know if Mr. Gertner can speak to this, as with an eleven-year-old playing basketball, but Sportica is busy year-round. Um, has any thought been given, and again, excuse me, being new to, to the board, I envision October and Fight Fest at Great Adventure, and the absolute nightmare that comes with the traffic, with the new jug handle, the draw to the restaurants there, the ball fields at full use, because it's still October, the weather's still decent. The sport, the air dome full, and we said that was peak season for convention.
Right.
So you, you are, October is as crazy as can be, and then you add eight o'clock at night, or whatever time of day, leaving Great Adventure from Fight Fest. And we all saw the news this past year where everybody was not following the rules and cutting across traffic, and it was a mess. Um, so I guess it's just more of a concern that I have, and I understand, yes, I appreciate, um, the pedestrian safety stuff that has been put in place. But I see this jug handle here, and again, this might not be the right place for it, but I see the jug handle here with the traffic light, and then another traffic light to make the turn when we're grabbing our Starbucks, and we're grabbing our Popeyes, and our gas, seven-eleven. That's just a huge bottleneck and a very big safety concern that, that I have, as, I guess, as a father of athletes who would be running around this facility.
I understand completely, and that is why there have been several layers of review of the, you know, the circulation plans. We've had two county engineering staffs look at this, and I will agree with you, I, I'm going to take the traffic engineer's point of view, safety is priority number one. The bottleneck, the congestion, we're concerned about that as well, but safety trumps capacity. And the, the intersection has been designed to be safe, the two traffic signals will be coordinated, the two county engineering departments have looked at that, and the prim- The two county engineering departments have looked at that, and the primary focus that we all had when we were designing this was safety first. Are there going to be occasions when the level of service C or D that I projected becomes an E or maybe an F? Yeah, it's going to happen occasionally, but safety is the primary consideration. So you, you are correct about that.
So may, may I follow up for assistance? Can you, because this board, I'm like a planning board, sees types of plans less often. Talk, put a little bit more meat to the bone on what this traffic safety plan would entail, what kind of, what would be the gist of the discussions you would have with the police department as an example, just to further a-assist the board in understanding the breadth and depth of what those plans generally address.
Well, I, I, I think the start would be having a conference with the police department with the traffic safety division and showing them the plan and asking them for their input. They are the professionals when it comes to, you know, controlling traffic. And we would probably be all ears at first, listening to what the police told us, that, that's, that's the way it worked in, in the Monmouth University Traffic Management Plan. We listened to what the police told us they thought they needed. And we added our, you know, i-if they came up with a suggestion that didn't meet an engineering standard, we'd let them know, but other than that, we'd let them make the call.
I was hoping you would fall into this, let me ask you a direct question. I'll use the Fright Fest example. Take notice that Fright Fest has occurred year in, year out for twenty-some-odd years. You're adding these uses here. What is the trigger for this applicant and this manager to go to, to lease up his facility? Go to and coordinate with Great Adventure and the police department to have specials out there, to have, to call in Ocean County Sheriff's Department for traffic management? How does that process work in writing? So that when that weekend, which I think everyone on the board, I'm speaking on their behalf, is going to presume it is, it is the highest and best capacity opportunity that Octo-, those two October weekends. How is that going to function to ensure that there's coordination?
I, I can try to answer it only from an engineering perspective, not a legal perspective, but I think what has to happen is the manager of the project itself, Mr. Cardinali, has to advise the police department of what events are coming up weeks in advance, Fright Fest would be one of them, and, you know, get that conversation started weeks before it happens to see, to sit down with the police and ask them what they need to have happen. But I think ultimately, the decision to implement a traffic control plan probably rests with the town more than it does with the applicant, but the applicant needs to give you the schedule and let you know what's coming.
So let me give some corollary advice based on my own experience, similar but not the same. So I had served in the past as the borough attorney of Point Pleasant Beach, which has several large activities and opportunities. And what ultimately the Borough Council there decided to do was implement an ordinance addressing special events, which ensured by ordinance with an enforcement mechanism, quite frankly, that the large site generators, traffic generators, had to report special events, given whatever criteria Point Beach determined, had to report. So that there was a, a, almost, you know, a legislation that forced the cooperation and discussion so that, and I'll just name the names, so that when, uh, the, you know, Chamber Commerce had the
Lobster Fest.
Lobster Fest and, and Jenks is having an event, and Jenks and Martell's have the same event, that there's some level of coordination with the, uh, with the police department. So I, from my chair as the board's attorney, I agree with Mr. Ray's recitation that at the end of the day, municipality has to understand what its boards have approved and then move towards traffic, um, the traffic coordination plan. What the board can do to ensure, um, to ensure some level of compliance is through development agreements and, and the like, that there is an, an understanding that that reporting mechanism will have to be implemented. And they've already understood that because they've talked about the traffic, the traffic safety.
I said, I, I want to piggyback on Sean's statement and kind of take it the next step. I mean, that could be a condition of an approval as well, that, that the board request that the applicant approach the council and, and, and work out a reasonable special events ordinance as the prototype for the rest of the town. This is the largest proj-, this will be the largest project in town, probably deserves it more than any, anything else we've seen previously. Uh, second question I have for Mr. Ray. That what, what stage of this overall development triggers the traffic signal? Can, the controlled traffic signal at the jug can?
It's my understanding it goes in right up front, if I'm not mistaken. Oh, the first, okay.
Prior to the first CEO of the
Part of the first CEO for the warehouse building in phase two, that would be.
Prior, uh, prior to the first warehouse CEO.
Correct.
Okay. Um, is there a timing anticipated on that?
Yeah, they're building now, I mean, they
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It's under construction.
Yeah, okay, so it's going to be soon, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if they, uh, I, I know they started site work, I don't know if they actually received the building permit for, maybe foundation only at this point.
Okay.
And just going back to the special events idea, although I don't know the specifics, there is an ordinance that is in place for special events that goes to the clerk's office. Uh, and I'm not sure if they coordinate with the, uh, police department, but there is an ordinance in place. Yes.
Yeah, James, go ahead.
Just in line with what Mr. Gertner and Mr. Hill had just testified to, we spoke about. The term large generator.
Just into the microphone, James, please. Jeff.
Is that better? I can't, I can't get much closer to that.
It's not on, I don't think.
It's on, it's on.
I didn't hear you.
Okay. In line with what Mr. Gertner and Mr. Hill talked about, the possibility, the problem with enforcement, possibility of talking with the governing body, the council, or putting a condition on, I'm concerned about the term large generator. Mr. Papporo just mentioned special event, which is probably a better term to use. Because I don't think, I, I think an argument can be made that we can't classify this as a large generator when we're providing less parking than is required in, in the calculation itself. What do you think?
So I, there was no, when I use that term, it was, there's no technical definition behind it, it was just two words I threw out there.
Well, Mr. Gertner mentioned the same thing.
Oh, I was piggybacking Sean.
My, my main concern is, you know, what is, what is the common meaning of a large generator? If you're going to have a condition that requires something to be done.
There is none.
Right, right.
There is.
Well, that's the problem.
Well, I, I don't, I, I, I think that, as I testified to before, Mr. Hurley, I think what needs to happen is Mr. Cardinali, the manager, has to let the township know in advance of what events are coming up and then let the township and the police department make the call based on the information that they get. That, that's the way I think it has to happen.
I think in listening to Mr. Papporo, Mr. Hill, I think what needs to be done, right, is should the board act favorably here, it's in all likelihood time to review the existing special events ordinance to ensure that it is in line with an approval and the possible special events generations from this site and perhaps Great Adventure as well. And that can, to the extent that the applicant would, would be acceptable to that. So he used a broad, Mr. Hill used a broad term of, you know, that condition of approval, I think, I think it's worthy of reviewing the ordinance.
And, and I'll reach out to Mr. McGuckin and tell him the board's concern.
Yep.
Any other board members have questions for the traffic engineer? Does that conclude your traffic presentation?
Traffic, yes. Graham McFarlane, our engineer.
Mr. Mc, can I raise your hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kind of give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation, and through the chairman, your qualifications?
Sure, Graham McFarlane, M.A.C.F.A.R.L.A.N.E. Professional engineer, professional planner, certified municipal engineer, principal of professional design services. Uh, testified before this board on many, many occasions. Tonight, I'll just be offering some testimony regarding professional engineering.
This floor is accepting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Graham, um, in, just a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
So the engineering really hasn't changed much from the approved plan. Stormwater management, can you generally describe how it's designed and whether it's changed in any way with this most recent plan?
Yes, Anthony, if you can just put A three up there real quick, that seems to be the, uh, the most popular plan tonight. And I don't get to talk about anything fun that's already been done by the other guys, but just, uh, just a couple of the nuts and bolts that, that Sal asked about. Uh, the plan for stormwater management really has remained significantly unchanged. Uh, there's a detention basin up front here, uh, towards five thirty-seven, there's a second, smaller detention basin to accept runoff from the highway. There's another detention basin down at the bottom of the, of the ball fields. Uh, there's also some underground detention located behind, um, behind the buildings on the east side of the property. Again, this plan is just an, just an amended plan. Uh, as you've heard testimony, the garage has been moved from, you know, from, from this area here to the east to over here. Uh, so in, in conjunction with making these changes, we've just had to make some, some internal adjustments to the, to the storm drainage system and some of the utilities, uh, but essentially they remain unchanged and, uh, you know, big, big picture, there's no real significant changes to any of the design for the project.
And the stormwater management complies with the current regulations?
Yes, it does, and, and of course, we're in receipt of the letters from the board's professionals with some technical comments, which we'll be able to address all their comments as part of resolution compliance.
And, and that comment about addressing the professional comments is not limited only to drainage, it's stormwater management, it's all their technical comments?
That's correct.
Okay. It's really all we have.
Is there water holding existing?
Basins.
Uh, well, there is now door construction because the, the basins get silted up, door construction. Um, but they will not hold water permanently when they're completed. It's very common that during the construction period, uh, the basins do hold water as they do get, you know, do get silted up. And they'll be, they'll be cleaned and, you know, tilled as, as needed to make sure that they, um, are free draining and don't, don't hold the water like they are right now during, during the construction period.
Yes, Mr. Hill.
I just want to, uh, generally concur with, with Mr. McFarlane's testimony in that the overall project, the overall phase one, when it was initially designed, uh, was designed with a reasonable stormwater management system in mind, uh, consisting of infiltration basins and, and subsurface storage and infiltration. Uh, the, the size of those storage and infiltration basins and storage facilities was based on the num-, uh, the quantity of impervious cover to be constructed uh, through all of the iterations since the original, actually, I shouldn't say that. Uh, this, the lat-, the, the prior revisions to the plan required revisions to the stormwater management system, uh, specifically with, with incorporating additional storage within the, uh, fields. Uh, but this revision does not significantly modify what's required or require any significant revisions other than, uh, just, uh, providing additional pipe, pipe capacity calculations to supplement the prior stormwater report. Uh, but from an impervious cover standpoint, there's, there's no significant change, therefore it doesn't trigger any significant, or any changes to the stormwater system. Uh, it's all, it's all, well, it's, it's kind of semantics, but it's, it's detained, retained and infiltrated for the most part, right? So it's managed, we, we like to, we like to use the word manage because there's various ways to manage the, the, the peaks, the runoff. The, it's infiltrated, yes. Uh, I don't know, uh, are there discharges into the welllands?
Yes.
There are, okay.
Yeah, and, and
The back, yes.
This, this whole system has evolved over the years. Uh, year, years back, you were either considered detention or retention. But as the, as regulations have changed, uh, most of the systems we build and the systems we're building on this job are really combination. They provide recharge to groundwater and they provide a discharge, so they're a combination retention and detention systems now.
I just didn't want to be out there producing.
Correct.
If it ever did, it means it requires additional maintenance.
Right.
It's not here the design.
Right, and there was a ma-, a maintenance plan has to be filed.
Right, and there is a stormwater maintenance plan, and that was attached as part of the original approval.
That, that concludes our presentation. Yeah, we brought, we brought another planner, Christine Cofone, for the D variance relief, if the board had concerns with D variance, but I think since the D variance was just a movement of one, the D variance building from one spot to the other, it, it, we would make it more complicated than necessary. Please.
I want to open it to the public, anybody want to speak before we have mono? Good morning.
Sir, thank you for raising your hand, excuse me. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kind of give us your full names, spell your last and your address, please?
Ed Bannon, B.A.N.N.O.N., twenty-two Abercromé Court.
I have a question for Ian, uh, regarding the parking. Uh, was there any consideration ever to changing his parking lot into a multi-story parking deck? Rather than to just restrict maybe four or five levels here, make this three levels and this three levels, and then you were, your parking requirements?
No, the single, but to do multiple parking structures would just add a significant cost with very, no, almost no benefit. So we've consulted with parking structure engineers, uh, this is the most efficient way to do it. Uh, in fact, that parking area that you're pointing to across from the air dome, that's already constructed.
This is already constructed.
That's already constructed.
Anybody else coming up in the public? Mono. Good morning. Thank you.
Sir, thank you for raising your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please?
Anthony Travisano, T.R.A.V.I.S.A.N.O., nine thirty-two Anderson Road. I just have a question that you're, you're moving that convention center five feet off the line. And now you're talking about loading, you know, that's where your loading zone, so in the convention center and all the ones I've been at, you know, car shows, things like that, you're going to have a lot of traffic, bigger vehicles in the back. Is there any way that that's going to push the warehouses any closer to Anderson Road or, uh, the other court that's right there?
No, there's no change to the warehouses, nor the buffering and all the other representations.
Very good, thank you.
I'm not seeing anybody else in the public, I'm going to close it.
Is there anyone else in the public?
I don't see them.
Okay.
I am good. Okay, so in closing, you have a closing statement?
No, it's getting late, I know we want to try and get home by ten o'clock, we so, um, we'd request that the board act favorably on the application.
Yes, James, go ahead.
I guess of Mr. Forden and, and for Mr. Peters, on the parking garage, and this is a GDP, which means you have a lot of mixed uses that are generally permitted in a situation of this nature. Cannot the parking garage, since the testimony is going to be associated with this, with the conference center, could it not be considered like an accessory use? As opposed to a principal use?
That we, we went through that last meeting, I for, the answer was no, and I can't remember why, um, yeah, because it's, it's, it's a, it's a structure that services the entire project, really, it's not tied to anything.
I think that was the basis of that determination.
Yeah. And I, I, because we asked that question to Jeff early on, I think. And I, I, because we asked that question to Jeff early on, I think. At least I thought Ian did, back before we came to this board.
Well, I know, I know it's not listed as a accessory use, but in, in context, I guess it really is in a way. Okay, it's been addressed, it's been addressed.
Okay, it's up to us now, we're in the, did you make your closing statement? I'm sorry.
I did. It was, I had no, I had none.
He said it, he said it was 10 o'clock.
That was your closing statement? Before you had park, park and traffic, that wouldn't happen.
Well, wait, wait.
Two hours.
Let's not go too far beyond deliberation here, okay?
Any board members have any questions? Let's bring it out, what you're feeling about the,
As, as far as the use is concerned, what we're here for is a garage, correct? It's, it's one of the issues to be addressed. Right, amended site plan, but what's, what, yeah. And, and the variance related, were you severe, excuse me? Any comments on that? Any thoughts? Nothing major. It's an, it's an amendment to a, a plan that's already been approved. The, the impact on the changes is negligible, as far as I'm concerned. There is a relocation of buildings, things of that nature, but there's no negative impact. I accept the testimony of the engineer, and our engineer, that there's no significant change to the stand water, stormwater management plan. I don't see any problems with it, as a matter of fact.
All right, nobody else have any? Okay, why don't you make a motion?
I'm, I move that we approve the application, amending the previously granted site plan.
Motion.
Well, I would say that that, well, Mr. Hurley articulated specifics. I would just add to that, that the board would specifically find that the D variance relief and testimony that supported the granting of the parking garage at first relates to this, this amendment. As Mr. Board testified, that we accept that.
The purpose for granting the variance at that point, is carried forward here.
Okay, so we have a complete motion?
They've agreed to all those conditions, but yes, they had that.
All right, we have a motion, a second roll call, please.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, the parkway was closed while I was in the middle of it. I sat for an hour.
Wow.
Between 91 and 98.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very nice, you are good.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Have to say it out loud.
Thank you. Awesome as always. Thank you for coming.